Well, good evening, everybody, and welcome to the Wednesday, May 13 special meeting of the Placerville City Council. Will everyone please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
If you hold this one, it's held one. I will put the flag up if you give me just one second.
Yep.
Or I thought I had it up.
Yeah, we don't want to see who's sporting midriff.
Give me, uh, give me one second. I'm not as, I'm not as good as this, as Regina is, so.
There we go.
Hey.
Perfect. All right, everyone, join me in the pledge of allegiance.
All right.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. Thank you. It feels a little bit like Groundhog Day.
That's true.
All right, well, let's go ahead and get started here. And, Mr. Morris, would you call roll call, please?
Yes, Mayor. Mayor Saragosa.
Here.
Vice Mayor Thomas.
Here.
Councilmember Acuna.
Here.
Councilmember Borelli.
Here.
And Councilmember Taylor.
Here.
Okay, everybody's present. Moving on to item three, announcements to the public. Do we, anyone have anything they wanted to share this evening?
No comments.
All right, seen none. We will move to the adoption of the agenda.
Move for adoption.
Second.
All right, we have a first and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Seen none, five zero, thank you. We'll move on to public comment. Cleve, do we have any written communication this evening?
None.
Okay, we will now open it up for a public comment. And again, this is for anything that's not on the agenda tonight.
Like, we have two attendees. I don't see any hands being raised, so I think we're good, Mayor. Forward.
Okay. All right, then let's jump into what we're all here for tonight. Item six, our 2020-2021 operating budget review and discussion. And I believe Mr. Warren has this for us this evening.
Yeah, thank you. I'll, I'll just start out quickly. I want to thank Dave for all the work he's been doing on this. This is, uh, I, I think in the years that I've been doing budgets at this, this is probably one of the most hectic. It seems like we always have somewhat of a struggle, but this has been an interesting one. I want to thank Dave for his work on it, as well as all the work that you've seen. You got a preview of this last night, but all the work that our department heads have done to get us to the point where we are. Still some work to do, but we are making progress. So with that, um, I will turn it over to Dave to walk you through the presentation.
Great. Thank you, Cleve, and thank you, Mayor and Council. Good evening. Also want to shout out to all the department heads. They've been busy reviewing our budget, actually, over the last five months, but especially over the last month, figuring out how we're going to balance this year's budget. So, anyway, thank you to them. I'm going to go ahead and jump into the PowerPoint presentation. Uh, let's see here. Just a second. So it should be the first handout in your packet. Got a lot of files open here. Which one did you start with? There it is, okay. The presentation. We've got so many files open that, uh, it kind of clouded the, uh... All right, so today we're going to talk about the fiscal year 2021 operating budget. You may recall, in a previous council meeting, we talked about the CIP budget, deferring that process until this fall, until we know better what our Measure H, Measure L, uh, sales taxes are doing. So tonight, we're just focusing on the operating budget, primarily the budget assumptions, which are kind of a moving target, but, um, and we'll also talk about the budget adoption process. The budget process, we started out with a status quo budget, basically the same programs and services that we've been providing over the past several years. We looked at the anticipated personnel costs, in other words, in each position, which person's in that position, where, where are they on the salary schedule, what's the highest salary step we think they're going to be at, what health insurance plan are they in, what are the anticipated costs of those health insurance benefits, so on and so forth. And we did assume certain things on our health and welfare, for example, a 10% increase in health insurance. We think with COVID, there's a good chance we may see a double-digit increase in our health insurance. I will have that information, at least a pretty good idea, later this month when we speak with SDRMA, they adopt their rates in June for the following January premium setting. So we'll provide that information to you, hopefully, at your next meeting. Workers' compensation, we do have, um, some preliminary numbers, however, as far as the cost by working class, we don't have yet, but, um, the anticipated cost is approximately 12.23%. Um, it's not presented here. It will be at the next version of your budget. It's about a $38,000 increase across all funds. 5% of that was due to anticipated increases in personnel salaries, but as you can imagine, those, those numbers that were assumed are actually probably going to be slightly less because of things like the pool closing and other actions. So, um, it does include a $179,000 increase in pension contributions. We've talked about this back in December. We anticipate a $223,000 increase in our pension contributions across all funds. And just as a reminder, our retiree medical insurance, we're just doing pay-as-you-go. The actual cost of the insurance, no pre-funding. And then as far as general inflationary impacts, any changes in chemicals, fuel, um, you know, fuel costs, fortunately, with COVID-19 right now, fuel costs are incredibly low, but, um, that could change next year, so we have some assumptions there. Good news, our animal services, um, is estimated to be $34,000 less. Now, that's an estimate. We'll get a true-up of that in September, I believe, Cleve, um, but right now, we think our animal services will actually be $34,000 less than their estimate last year, so that's very good news. As you know, animal services has slowly increased, or actually increased pretty rapidly over the last three or four years, so good news. Also, um, we will own City Hall outright, um, in 2021, so our last payment of $59,000 from the general fund will be made this fall, and then no more payments, so all the TIs will be paid off, and we'll own City Hall completely, so, which is great.
Yay!
Yay! Celebrate the little things. Um, because of COVID-19, we're not, um, you know, we're not talking about any alternative service levels or ASLs unless they're savings. If we identify an ASL through the remaining budget process, we'll bring that to you, but for right now, we're not. And what I mean by that is any additional positions, um, you know, new programs, so if we see any programs that are going to reduce, kind of like, you know, what we did with the pool temporarily, um, we'll bring those to you, but for right now, there's no ASLs proposed. Minimal capital outlay, we'll get into that. We had an initial budget, and we've trimmed back. One of the things I want to caution you, over the last couple of years, we have taken a two-step approach with, with the workshops. We, the first workshop, we would show you kind of all the requests, unedited, and then the second workshop, we would show you our recommendations. Well, due to what's going on with our budget, you know, we started out with a $1.6 million deficit, we felt it was pertinent that we get in and start trimming back as much as we can to make this as painless as possible. So we've done that, but we are prepared to show you all those numbers, what it looks like beforehand. Health and safety training, again, we're recommending just health and safety-related training. If there's funding available, grants or post-incentive, police officer standard training incentive, reimbursements, we're considering those. Sales tax, it's actually, you know, HDL originally came out and said, "We're anticipating about a one-and-a-half percent decrease year-over-year at a lower base." Their latest estimate is $298, uh, which doesn't even put it down into our pension contribution, so, but at least it's positive. It's .0006 increase. Just as a side note, no cannabis permit revenue was assumed here, so if, if we do happen to have some dispensaries open up in 2021, that would be very helpful. And again, we started out with a $1.6 million deficit. The department heads dug in deep, and we'll show you some cuts. They were able to, um, find about six, over $600,000 in cuts, adjustments, uh, overall, and, uh, we'll talk more about that. Your general fund is 70.84% personnel, and with Measure J, the transfer's out, um, it's more like 73%. But, um, when we talk about where do we go from here, um, we, we will need to look at personnel, um, to see if there's any way, whether it's someone retiring or other things, we, we're going to be looking at. Can't get too much into that because, uh, um, it is negotiable, but I can tell you that we have, matter of fact, today, we, we met with one of our labor groups to begin those discussions, so.
How'd that go?
Relatively well, yeah. Um, sewer and water fund, uh, as you know, EID just raised its rates. We anticipate our wholesale water rates, which are negotiable, but, um, their water rates are planning on increasing effective January 1, 7%. We will begin negotiations most likely this summer with EID, and then bring a contract to you in the fall. I can tell you that, um, what I've read is that the board is kind of doing a wait-and-see to see how this economy ends up in the fall, um, and possibly through the winter, um, and then kind of reevaluate their rate increases, but, um, so, we should know pretty much by the fall of, you know, are we going to have an increase in January and to what degree, but for right now, uh, we're assuming, not in these numbers we're showing you tonight, but we're assuming a 7% increase in our wholesale water rates. So, and then, one of the things we've talked about, um, not officially, but, uh, staff, and I know some council members have talked to Cleve, is do we consider deferring our water and rate, water and sewer rates? Actually, we did talk about this in, I think, a couple of council meetings ago, just real briefly, but this is something, we're still doing analysis, but, um, we will bring a recommendation to you at your next council meeting, uh, because those rate increases become effective June 16th, and we would like to let the ratepayers know if there's any deferment of what that looks like, so, and as far as the extent of the deferment, that's something we'll be talking about further, but one of the things we need to make sure is that we meet our coverage ratio, our, our debt coverage ratio, which is 120% of, of our debt service for our sewer enterprise fund, um, to make sure that we're meeting those covenants. So, um, we're still doing analysis on that. We'll provide more information at your next workshop. Another thing I'd like to talk about is our adoption process. We are gaining headway on balancing our budget, but as you know, um, the remaining $600,000, which we'll talk about, um, through the presentation in your general fund, um, we're looking at everything, including personnel, so we have begun meeting with our, um, labor groups, and through that process, um, we're hoping to identify at least some savings, uh, to offset that $600,000, but that takes time. And so, you know, we have a second budget workshop in two weeks, uh, and then normally, your first meeting in June, we have an open hearing, so we pretty much know what our budget is, and then we bring the 120-page document to you to adopt the second meeting in June. Under these circumstances, that's a very aggressive, um, schedule because of what's going on with the economy and everything, and we're going to be meeting with HDL, um, I believe it's on the 17th, to receive, uh, further information about our first quarter return and what they're seeing as far as forecasts over the next 12 to 18 months. So if we're able to, you know, secure a, a balanced budget, uh, within, um, the normal schedule, or even an accelerated schedule, we'll try to, to bring that to you. If we're not, I'm just forewarning you that we may need to, and this is really a decision that Cleve and you need to make, uh, of adopting a, a continuing appropriation. What that is, and we've done this in times like this, during the Great Recession, I know we did it more than once, is where the council would actually adopt 90 days of the previous fiscal year, or 25% of your previous fiscal year budget, so that you can remain open, and that buys you time to adopt a budget with, with the assumptions that you need. So I'm not saying we're going to do, need to do that, but I'm just forewarning you that perhaps that may be something we need to consider, depending on where we are in negotiation, so on and so forth, so. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions until we get into the, uh, theme of the subject.
Dave, I have a question.
Sure.
Am I understanding correctly that we're actually anticipating a very slight increase in sales tax from last year?
That's what they're telling us, and, um, you know, the first, um, the first six months of this fiscal year were fairly strong, um, and, uh, what's going on in Placerville is a little bit better than other places. Now, that's based on some very rough analysis by HDL. You may recall, when they provided us those numbers as far as the loss rates, it was fairly early into COVID, and it assumed that we would reopen June 1st. Now, we're starting to, as you know, well know, um, we're into phase two, um, but I believe HDL's assumption was we would be fully open by June 1st. I'm not sure if that's possible, and it's really up, and Cleve's shaking his head, so it could actually be worse than that. And so that's where we really need to have a candid conversation with HDL. What are they seeing? Where are we at in our reopening process? And also having follow-up discussions with our businesses to see what they're seeing as well, and then from there, come up with revised forecasts.
Do you know if HDL was assuming that, um, on June 1st, when businesses reopen, that they would just be back to their normal levels of business and service, or were they, did they assume, um, in these calculations, that, you know, businesses might be operating at 40% their regular business?
Yeah, they assumed pretty much back to business, however, they did assume that, um, the rollout would be very slow. In other words, it wouldn't be like you flip a light switch, that, um, there would be a, they, they assumed there would be a certain level of tenant demand, but they did recognize the realists, that it's not going to be, you know, a slingshot where everything just goes back to normal. But I, I imagine with what's going on right now, where you've got a hodgepodge of reopenings throughout the state, and what I mean by that is, um, some are opening sooner than others, um, you may have heard that down in LA, they're, not that we're LA, but they're possibly, uh, looking at extending their, um, shelter in place through, what, June or July, so.
July.
July, and so that's not us, and so that's where we really need to have a candid conversation. And honestly, I think we're going to have to ask them to do a, a very, um, micro-type analysis of Placerville to figure out what, what do we think's really going to happen in Placerville, and then also, like I said, having conversations with your top 25 generators to say, "Hey, what are you looking at?" And, and then, you know, make the best estimate, and honestly, I think, more than ever, we're going to, every quarter, we're going to have to reassess, and if it looks like either things are a little bit better or, or a lot worse, we're going to have to adjust accordingly. We may be coming back to you, say, mid-year and saying, or even, you know, 60, 90 days into the fiscal year, saying, "Hey, we got to adjust back even more," or, "Hey, we can ease up a little bit." And that's one of the things, it's real important when we, um, look at this, wherever we're cutting to, to consider that. So, anyway, I hope they, I hope that answers your question.
Yeah, thank you. And then one, one more question. With the water rates, um, can you remind me what percent increase those rates were supposed to be going up to?
Yeah, overall, uh, EID's water rates, they plan on, um, raising them by 7% effective in January, the billing period in January.
I think she's talking about what ours are.
But, yeah, the June 16.
Oh, I'm sorry.
City rates, yeah.
Um, I apologize. I don't, I believe it's, um, around 5%, but I would have to go back and look. I'm sorry.
Okay, that's all right. Thanks.
We'll get you that answer.
Any other questions?
Yeah, Cleve, I had one.
Yeah.
Uh, for Dave, you mentioned that you're going to be, is, when are you meeting with HDL? When is your next meeting to, to go over the numbers?
May 17.
So, so next week, then?
Yes.
Okay.
And we'll also be receiving, um, we should be receiving as early as, eh, probably not next week, probably the week after the, the actual, um, first quarter results, so that'll be very telling. We won't have all the details to the first quarter, but, um, we will have the aggregate, what the, you know, loss, growth or losses.
Thanks, Dave. That was going to be my other question. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Dave, how much is the, uh, I, I assume it's a fairly small amount, but how much is the, uh, minimum wage increase estimate for us?
Uh, it's $1, um, and it's going from $13 to $14.
Do you know what that totals to, though, for us, David?
Yeah, what's?
As far as the cost?
Correct.
I don't have the number in front of me. Um, I would estimate it's approximately, um, $20,000.
Okay.
Now, that's if we open the pool this, and actually, no, that wouldn't, it would affect Aquatics next season, so, um...
For '21, right?
Yeah, I can also get that for you if you like.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm hoping the state will hold off on it, but, you know, not holding my breath either.
Not just for the city, but businesses in general.
Right.
Uh, Dave?
Dennis, yeah.
Yes, thank you. How much, uh, of an effect is the, um, on our cash flow, is the states, uh, allowing, there's, there's various different things the states allowing businesses do in terms of deferring their, their sales tax and deferring their, um, a variety of different things, even property tax. How is that affecting our cash flow?
Well, that's a great question, because it, it actually hasn't really affected us yet, but it will beginning the end of this month, and so, um, you'll start receiving, um, your, um, advances for second quarter, or excuse me, for the first quarter, and, um, that will, that advance for this month is going to be less because of tax deferrals. So, um, the tax deferral through, so the 90-day tax deferral through July is anticipated to be about $1 million. And, and so we, but we can book that as revenue, however, um, we can book it as revenue this fiscal year. The, the one that really kind of stinks is the, um, 12-month deferral, so that's for smaller businesses that have $5 million, up to $5 million in sales, they can defer up to $50,000, and that hit is $539,000, but we can't, we can't book it as a receivable because it's, it goes past August 15th, so, um, that's going to affect our books directly and cash flow as well. So we think we'll be okay with the deferment. Um, there's, as far as property tax, we've already received all of our property tax as of this month. TOT, we, we have a couple of, uh, hotels that have requested deferment of their TOT, and they're on payment plans, but, um, and, you know, of course, it is kind of quieter right now. I know, uh, Pierre, he comes down and he's still, he has folks pulling permits, but they're smaller, but we are having, uh, there is some activity, but it's definitely quieter.
All right, thank you.
Cleve, I had a follow-up question.
Okay.
For Dave, and, um, thanks, Dennis, for reminding me. The property tax, are we safe for this year, uh, Dave, with the, the payments that we have to make to the fire district and what have you?
Yeah, good question. So the fire district actually receives its property tax directly from El Dorado County.
Okay.
Um, so it, it's not a pass-through. It's, you know, it's identified as property tax within the city, but it, we don't actually pay it to them, so it comes directly from the county. As far as property tax, my understanding, what the league and, um, HDL has said, is that we really don't, we probably won't see any reductions in property tax this, in fiscal year 1920 or 2021, but 2122, if we go into a prolonged recession and a down housing market, you could see a reduction in assessed values, which then in turn turns into lower property tax.
Great, thank you.
So, following up on that, though, Dave, even if our property tax does drop, it, that's up to the fire district to make up that difference, not us.
When it comes to the fire.
We don't have a bill, a, a set amount that we have to pay them.
That's correct.
But will they get our property tax, whatever it is, and they have to make it work?
That's correct.
They get, they get their percentage. We have a small percentage we get, and our portion would go down also. We would have to identify that.
Right. I can tell you that, you know, during the Great Recession, our property tax went down a little bit, but nothing like sales tax. It was pretty minute, um, because we have a, a lot of affordable housing, and under, anything under $500,000 was still holding fairly well, so.
So one thing I will, uh, mention to you, um, just as a thought going forward, um, is that maybe in the future, we talk about potentially, um, taking a new look at their contract with the, the fire district, and I don't think any of them are off, but I would, I would tell Tim that, too, if he were here, that the idea would be that perhaps we don't give them a 100% of property tax, maybe there's a percentage of sales tax goes to them in some way, so that we don't have quite as big a swing. Obviously, like we're saying, we're seeing a big swing in sales tax, hardly any in property tax, so they are probably not hurt as much by this as we are due to the sales tax revenues go down, so it's just an idea that I've had, and maybe we open discussions on that in the future.
Wait. Go ahead.
Dave?
Yes.
Um, I'm, I'm still, I'm going to go back to, um, the, the, well, the amount that we pay the fire department. You said it's 100%, but yet they are also, when there's a decrease, they are also affected, but, so I guess I don't, I, I, well, I know, I don't understand our payment to them. If, if it's 100%, why aren't they just paid off the top and then we get the crumbs? I, I, I'm not sure. I don't understand how it works, how it's calculated.
Yeah, Patty, it's, it's based on a formula, and, um, it goes back to 1992, '93, assessed values, and their share of the increment, the tax increment, and, and so every year they get, of the growth, they get so much of that, and, but it, if it re-tracts, they also feel the retraction, but the cash goes directly from El Dorado County to them.
Okay, so that, but that's what I didn't understand, because I, I, you, you keep saying 100% goes to the fire department, so that isn't 100% then. I mean, we get a portion.
No, I, I don't, I didn't, if I said 100%, I didn't mean that.
No, you didn't.
There, there a portion of the sale, of the property tax goes directly to them.
Their portion, okay.
Right now, right now, it's about 1.8 million, it's their share.
And what did we, what did we get?
Uh, we got about 320, I believe.
Okay.
320,000.
Follow-up on that, Mr. Mayor, if I could?
Yep.
Thank you. Uh, just for the, uh, Patty might remember, I, I have some vague memories that, uh, in the past, Dave and Cleve have looked at that pass-through, because I believe- Because I believe it doesn't show as income to the city. And there, there have been times where it's helpful to have that for financing. Would this be also a time to take a look at that, Cleve or Dave? Looking at that contract?
It's actually, i- it is reported in your financial statements. It's a, it's a note in the back of the financial statements every year.
Wasn't there something a few years ago we did, Dave, where, where if we'd had that, we, we worked on trying to get that corrected so that that money actually came into our account? And we wanted to write that check ourself. You remember that? Several years ago, was during?
That, that was probably before my time.
No, I don't think anything could be before your time.
I know I look old, but I'm not that.
No, you and I have aged gracefully. All right, but just a thought, cause I, I, there's something sticking in my mind that that was a hot topic for a while, that we wanted that money.
Right. Perhaps a footnote in your operating budget indicating what that estimated amount is. We can, we can do that.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Dave, does a, if we were to, to go towards a continuous appropriation, does that help us with cash flow?
Uh, not really, um, because i- i- it basically we're oper- I mean, we're gonna start, we are starting to hemorrhage cash, um, and that would just, uh, continue it. However, I can tell you that, you know, we're trying to hold back as much as you, we can. Cleve has directed all department heads to try to hold back, you know, any purchases we can, anything that doesn't have to be done right now, holding off. Um, so we, you know, we would make it work if we had to, but I'm hoping that we'll have a budget for you that you can adopt before the end of the fiscal year. That's our goal, and we're gonna give it our best.
How much, and how much data will we have for that, to meet that deadline? From H, I mean, from our sales, will it be just before first quarter?
Ye- all we'll have is first quarter, and we'll have their forecast for the remain- this fiscal year, for the second quarter, as well as next fiscal year. So we should, by, I would think by the end of this month, we should have some pretty good information. And, um, and again, if it's about the same as what HDL told us, and we can make headway in, in labor negotiations, um, and other things, um, I'm hoping that we'll be in good shape, but, you know, there's a lot of moving parts. So we just wanna be prepared. If we're, if we're not there yet, say by the first, first week in June, um, I would recommend that you adopt a, a continuing appropriation.
Okay, thank you. And from your discussions earlier with our, our top tax producers, is there a, a general theme at this point? I know some of them probably saw almost an uptick because of the, the types of stores that were still open. Um, but just wondering what, what that initial assessment was?
Uh, frankly, I, I, those discussions were very minimal, um, because of the amount of time we had. Um, we focused on, um, when HDL, HDL is actually, I know we brought that up, but they've done a phenomenal job. We couldn't have delivered in the amount of time without the information they provided us. But, um, so because of that, we relied more heavily on HDL's data. And, and focused on that to make sure that it was reasonable. Um, but we will go back to your to- all of your top twenty-five and have a conversation.
Okay.
I think the one that stands out in my mind is Home Depot.
Right.
Um, I'm not sure about the others, uh, you know, but I know Home Depot is gonna have a, an increase.
Yeah, Home Depot is, you know, Diamond Pacific, your auto dealers, um.
I thought the autos, I thought the auto sales were off.
Auto sales are anticipated to be down, but I, I would like to have a conversation to see what they're seeing.
Okay.
Yeah. All right. Any other questions? We'll move on to, um, make sure my sequence is right here. Capital Outlay. So you have two documents. You have this one that is the actual requests from departments, which, um, for the sake of time, it might be good to focus on the summary, which I can put on the screen. It's a blue bar document called Capital Outlays Request Summary. Let's see if I can bring this up. See that?
Not yet.
No?
Blank right now.
Started screen sharing, but it doesn't show anything.
Really?
Do you see it on yours?
Your screen share. It says, stop to see. Screen sharing is paused. Huh. Let me try, it's doing it again. Yeah?
Same.
All right, well, we're having some technical difficulties. So why don't we go ahead and, uh, just forge ahead. So it's the blue bar document, Capital Outlay Request Summary, and it starts out with the police department. And, um, and I forewarned Joe, and I, I apologize to Commander Rand that, uh, he's first on the list, but, uh, anyway, uh, Commander Rand, if you could kinda just quickly give us an overview of the items that, uh, are here and the ones that we're recommending funding for this fiscal year?
Sure. Hi, everybody. Um, so on the blue barred handout, uh, item number three, police patrol, uh, you'll see a request for our bulletproof vest program. That program is, uh, is a fifty-fifty program where the Department of Justice Bureau of Justice Assistance, uh, provides fifty percent match, uh, requires us to contribute fifty percent. The thing with the bulletproof vests are, uh, in case you don't know, uh, they have a five-year lifespan, and they're specific to the officer in which they're cut and issued to. So it's not an item that can be, um, traded amongst officers. I just noticed my video was up. Does anybody wanna see me?
It, you're, there you go.
Uh, so circling back, it's, it's, uh, you know, bulletproof vests are specific to each office, and it's an item that, um, for obvious reasons, we would like to continue to fund, uh, first and foremost, the safety of our personnel, uh, as I know it's a commitment to, um, to the city. Uh, second one is a, um, mobile forensic software. That's, uh, that's software and hardware that allows us to, uh, forensically, uh, analyze cell phones or laptops or, or, um, tablets. Now that, that request was contingent upon us receiving a grant. Um, and it was a fifty-fifty match, and we haven't received information on whether or not we're actually gonna get that grant. So for us, it's kind of something that's in, in limbo. Um, you know, if we don't get it this year, uh, maybe next year, uh, type of, type of thing, so. Um, and that looks like it as far as our capital outlay. Anybody have any questions I can answer?
If I can just add one thing here for you, Joe, too. You'll notice on the patrol cars, as well as the police administration vehicle, we've noted that we wanna review that again at mid-year.
Okay.
We were starting to get on track. We were hoping with the patrol vehicles to keep those up where they needed to be. Um, we would like to find maybe by mid-year at least, maybe we can purchase one this year, if not two. Um, and so we wanna keep that on the radar. Um, if we can't, we can't. I think we've all determined that we, we will get by, but it does set us back a little bit in keeping that equipment up to date where we need it to be. So.
Great, great. Thanks.
Go ahead.
Kara, Kara had a question?
Uh-oh, go, go ahead.
Oh, Kara, you're on mute.
Kara, you're muted.
All right. Uh, so in the Capital Outlay Request Packet, it, it describes the need for police scanners. Um, and they sound pretty important. Um, it says in the description, it is very important for officers to be aware of crimes, fires, and medical emergencies around us as they have a local impact. With the increasingly intense fire seasons, it is extremely important that officers have the ability to monitor the fire department radio traffic. I noticed that police scanners are crossed off of the summary. Is that really feasible?
Yeah, those, those, I'm sorry, those were, um, upgrades to what we currently have. So the office, the vehicles are equipped with, with scanners now.
Okay.
Functional, but it's something that, uh, they're starting to break down. We don't have an inventory of spares any longer, so it's, it's gonna definitely need to be discussed.
Okay, but we do have some to get through this fire season.
Oh, for sure.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
I just have a real quick question, Joe. Um, um, on the, back to the vest, um, and you said that is required, right?
Yes, it's a, we per policy mandated as a, as a item of equipment for all officers going out into the field.
So I just had this thought, and it's, and I just wanted, um, if, if, if it's required and say we, uh, as a city do not re- um, provide them, uh, and something, God forbid, were to happen to one of the officers because they were, you know, they're, they didn't have a vest, is the city liable?
We would be, we would be answering some very difficult questions if that was to occur, yeah.
I think that's an added, you know, to add that little tidbit in there that, you know, we have to have those, so.
And then that's exactly why we feel we can't delete those out. We do need to keep them.
All right. And Mark, you had a question?
Yeah, thank you. I'm thinking, excuse me, thank you, man. Um, Joe, good evening again.
Hello.
The follow-up, I guess, just replay on the bulletproof vest. You, would it even be allowable for an officer to be out in the street on patrol without that piece of equipment?
No, it, it would be a violation of our current, uh, directives and policy. Um, and it's just not wise.
Yeah, absolutely.
Especially today's climate.
There's multiple layers of, um, requirements that, that we need to keep that on there. Regarding the forensic software, is there a certain life safety factor with that? Um, there is so much that goes on with Highway fifty and sex trafficking and, uh, those types of activities where the cellphone or a laptop could withhold the key evidence to find somebody quickly. Is this software gonna allow our officers to be able to get right to work on this instead of having to take a device over to the highway patrol or the sheriff's department?
Uh, there, there would be that delay. We do have, um, the software and hardware available to us regionally with our law enforcement partners. Uh, so we wouldn't be on an island. It's something we can reach out to somebody for. Um, and that delay would be no longer than us, um, at the, uh, leadership level contacting our, our partners and, and arranging for that equipment to either be brought to the field or for us to go to their facility and have it forensically, uh, analyzed.
And we currently don't have any of this software in-house right now.
No, no, we don't.
But with, with everybody living with a smartphone and they, you hear stories about delays where an agency didn't have it, or, you know, what if it happens at two o'clock on Sunday morning, blah, blah, blah. This would, this would allow us to be able to instantly begin the, uh, investigations of an electronic device, correct?
It would.
And so I kinda, that, that's where I see it's kinda like a life safety with the way they are used today and the unfortunate crimes that take place up and down Highway fifty. Thanks.
Yeah, the other, the other thing that was brought to our attention on that is that, uh, for many of these, if you're talking about a cellphone, we end up taking an officer off of service to run down to maybe Sacramento to have these analyzed. And so cost-wise, uh, we figured that these will probably pay for themselves fairly quickly in, in avoiding that cost of taking an officer out of, out of service to, to run down there and do that, so.
Thank you.
Um, why don't we go ahead and move on to the Community Services District, or District Department? Terry, can you speak to the pickup truck?
Yes, um, we had, uh, originally put, um, it, put in for a four-by-four pickup truck. We had gotten, um, one identical to it last year, and that actually was, uh, one that we were able to add to our fleet. It was meant to be a, um, uh, kind of an upgrade so we can sh- shift the, uh, one of our older ones down to less service. Uh, and then this year, we were looking to get, um, a second truck exactly like that, which is a, basically an extended cab, uh, full bed four-by-four, uh, full-size pickup truck. And the goal was to try to, um, get that additional vehicle so we could hand another, um, older vehicle down yet again for, um, seasonal workers that we were in hopes of, of picking up in order to, um, elevate our level of service for our ball fields and, uh, really get on, um, a lot of the, um, weed abatement and the fuel reduction. But since we have, uh, held off on hiring those seasonals, and now we don't have any, um, any, uh, goal of hiring anybody for this next, next fiscal year, we feel like that is a, that's a worthy item to, uh, to pull off the table for this year. But that was the only request we had on, on this particular, uh, capital outlet.
Any questions on that?
We thank you for that, Terry.
Thanks.
Question for Terry. Does, um, not getting this truck impact our ability to do weed and fuel abatement?
Um, not really, because we have, right now, we have our, uh, park superintendent, and we have three full-time, uh, parking maintenance workers. And we have a truck for each one of them. So it actually has been really handy with the, um, uh, trying to keep uh, people at a decent, uh, physical distance from each other. So they, they all are able to work independently and actually keep our service levels up at this point. Um, so i- it would be, i- the truck really doesn't make a lot of sense without the additional staff.
Okay, thanks.
Thanks, Terry. Uh, the next section is Public Works Department. Nick, if you could kinda give us an overview of your equipment, which ones we're planning on funding?
Hello, um, yeah, the only one that I still have on there is, uh, the traffic control signs. Those are the, the orange diamond-shaped signs that you see, um, in the traffic control areas, uh, sorry about that. Where our guys are working in the street, um, that provide the detours and things like that. The ones that we currently have, we've had for, um, pretty long time, done a lot of repairs on them. Uh, it's pretty common for them to actually get hit by cars. And so we do the best that we can, try and piece them back together, and they're, they're pretty faded out, so, um, happy to answer any questions about this.
Yeah, and there's, uh, two, three, four items that, uh, we're, we may look at mid-year, um, or we plan on reviewing, um, and if available funding, we may consider those things. And then the, uh, computer, the desktop computer was actually included on our computer list, which we, just so you know, uh, Jason Tanger reviewed all of our computer equipment, and he feels, you know, we've made a lot of headway in getting caught up with our computer equipment. Uh, thanks to, uh, Cleve and Jason with the program we have. And, um, so we feel, he, Jason feels that, uh, we'll be okay going through this next fiscal year and not replacing equipment at this time, so.
One, one question here, uh, on the mini excavator. Are we, uh, without getting that, does that put any projects at risk or more cost to a, a project's bottom line if we don't have that equipment?
Uh, not, not, not at this time. That's a piece of equipment that, um, in the past, if, if it's been a small, compact area, what we've done is, uh, gone out and rented one. It would allow us, long-term, um, it'd probably pay for itself over the course of several years if we were able to get it into some smaller spaces, but, um, we'll, we'll live without it for now.
Okay, thank you.
That was my question. How often do we have to rent one? So, you know.
We haven't had to rent one in the past year, Patty.
Great, okay.
It, it varies from year to year based on the projects that come up. And we, we debated this one. We went over and over with it, you know, does, does it really save us money? And it could in the long run, but given the circumstance we're in now, we felt that it was better to, to hold off on that for this year, so.
Well, and it's good to know that we, at least we, if we need one, we can rent one, so.
Yes, we can.
Okay.
I had a question for Nick.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Hey, Nick, uh, do we not have any pressure washers? I s- I saw that in your line through, or?
The, the, the Public Works Department does not currently have a pressure washer. Um, I'm told that the last one that we had, it, it lived its, uh, useful life, and it's been dead, so.
And so there's nothing up at the corp yard, or nothing out in the, any of the satellite areas that you have?
Um, I'm, I'm, I'm told, I'm told that, uh, the, the wharf has one down there that they acquired, uh, not too long ago, but I haven't, I haven't confirmed that. And so something that we would use that to, or is, um, not, not just for vehicle maintenance, clean everything up there, but also, um, for the sewer lift stations and just keeping, good, good housekeeping throughout the city.
So you, have you been working for, how long have you been working with? So you have you been working for how long have you been working without a pressure washer at Public Works?
I think I think that the last one might have died, was that about a year or two ago, Cleve, that downtown when they were they did the solars?
Yeah, it's been probably two to three years.
Yeah.
Okay, so it's been a while.
Yeah.
All right, I'll talk to you after the meeting. I may have an interim solution. I think that's a pretty important tool for you guys to have for truck maintenance, cleaning up spills, et cetera, et cetera.
And if you have a comment as well?
I do. When I when you're looking at the, for instance, the power washer, you are spreading it over general fund, water fund and sewer fund. Now, are we working hard to reduce the sewer and water fund as well expenses? Or would we look at this as a for is what we're really trying to do is drop that by fourteen forty-three? And the sewer and water fund, well, they're gonna they won't be able to help out because we're not gonna do the.
Well, maybe I can answer that. I think that our our position was although the way it looks right now, water and sewer funds are not in bad shape. I mean, that that might change. We'll see how people may try to come back. The only issue we have right now, and Dave, you can correct me if I'm wrong on this, is that we are seeing more people perhaps not not paying or being late paying paying on their utility bills due to various circumstances of people being out of where work and et cetera. And as you know, the position we have right now is we're not turning anybody off, so that's continuing. How that goes forward, we'll we'll kind of see. So that that's a that's a little bit of an issue right now, but not not a major one. So but we felt we felt that it was important to look at these funds, look at all of our funds. There may be some, for example, at our wastewater treatment plant, we recognize that we may not be able to make the same cuts that we do there in or in other areas, excuse me. But we felt that we needed to start with this and look where we can, at least in terms of equipment and new items. In terms of morale and employee and et cetera, for one department to see all new equipment and the one next door to them saying, what about me? It it makes it difficult. So we we felt that we would look at doing these cuts pretty much across the board for now. And again, you can see there's a number of these on here that we have said, let's take another look at it at mid-year. We hope that maybe things will change, so.
The the reason I ask is I want to understand the decision making process. If we're looking at, you know, if you're if you're really looking at a fourteen hundred dollar general fund expense as opposed to being concerned about the water and sewer fund. Considering considering the amount of some things, the amount of effort and significance of impact it has on their workload or or the time savings or cost savings in terms of how it impacts what limited staff time we have, the more efficient they are, the better they're gonna do and the less stress they're gonna have with their positions. So I'm just trying to balance these factors and seeing what the thought process is behind that.
Yeah, the the simplest way to think about it is how does how does that asset benefit each fund? So how much does a piece of equipment benefit the general fund versus the water fund or the sewer fund? We do our best to try to figure that out, but it's not a perfect science. But we do our best. So the total, oh, I'm sorry.
Patty.
Hi, Patty.
No, because I I'm gonna get on it. I it's kind of pertaining to this, but I know we've talked about this in the past, but Nick, do you watch like the I'm gonna call it fire sales and, you know, see if anybody that's like going out of business, if you can maybe find items like this that are not too old, but you, you know.
All right, Patty, to answer your question, I watch equipment auctions on a daily basis. But but that might be for personal use. As 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 far as I'm trying to acquire some of those items for our for our daily use up there, I'm I'm open to that option, too.
Well, I just thought, you know, it might be a really good time. I mean, there might, you know, take advantage of maybe some people that are, you know, maybe saying, this is it, I'm getting out and they might, you know, who knows?
You mean other people that are in the same position we are?
No, they're a little bit.
Don't say fire sale.
Yeah, I would just the the tools, Nick, the nine hundred, I guess, what is it, nine hundred and fifty dollars? I mean, it just seems really inefficient if we're having people having to run to different places to pick up a drill or something because theirs went out. I almost would rather find the nine hundred and fifty dollars so that we're not having staff run around it because their drill went out or their saws all.
I'll I'll mention that that that's probably the one that Nick fought the hardest for, I will admit. On your on your list there, they are they are in need of that. Basically comes down to us just trying to squeeze wherever we can squeeze, so. They will get the work done, but I will admit that it would be more efficient and they would probably be able to do it a little bit better if they if they had these, so.
Yeah, just to kind of put it in perspective, this list before we made the cuts or or adjustments that we're recommending totaled three hundred and thirty seven thousand dollars. And the general fund portion of that was about two hundred and twenty five, actually, two hundred and fifty five thousand. So pretty significant. And, you know, one of the things that, and this is something that we've done as a stopgap measure, but there's a document called Cash is King. I believe the League of California Cities, it may have been the National League of Cities came out with. And this is one of the things they talk about is deferring equipment the most as much as you can. If you have, you know, if you have existing equipment that still works and is safe. But it's painful, but it is something that, you know, to get there, again, we started out with a one point six million dollar general fund deficit, and this is one of the things that we're recommending. So instead of three hundred and thirty seven thousand dollars, the total is twenty two thousand ninety five dollars. And then to the general fund, sixty five hundred dollars versus about two hundred and fifty five thousand. So big difference there. And and again, as as Mr. Morris indicated, if at mid-year things look better, this is something that you could fund. And if, say, we don't hit our reserves as much, perhaps you could use some one-time funding for that purpose as well.
Hopefully, Nick, we can get you those tools for Christmas presents.
Yeah, I think we can find a way to get this one done. I I just that one, to me, it just seems unnecessary on that. I mean, I just don't see staff running around. Oh, my my drill doesn't work. I gotta go, you know, two miles to get a a different window to work with.
Well, Mary, so what we try to do in the morning is just plan for the day. And hopefully, we don't have any water or sewer emergency, so they can they can take those tools out first thing in the morning. They're not having to call somebody halfway across town to borrow a nine sixteenth wrench or do whatever, you know.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you.
All right, any other questions on capital outlay? Okay, why don't we move to conference training and travel? You have two documents. The first one is the conference training and travel requests, which are really in detail. And I think for this purpose, we may want to start use this document for our discussion. And again, it starts out with the police department. Each page is for each division within the police department and other other departments. So Commander Rann, if you could kind of walk us through briefly the patrol division?
Okay, starting at the top, the Training Administrator Course. That will actually make more sense as we we continue to go down through the requests. But ultimately, the Training Administrator Course is going to bring one of our supervisors up to speed on the legislative mandates that seem to, on a consistent basis, come out regarding what level of training we need to have, what new training, reenfresh refreshment of of certain skills. That most of these, because there is a legislative mandate behind them, are going to be there'll be a a post reimbursement trigger. Now, what that amount is, I didn't prepare this document, but I'm relatively familiar with it, is depending upon what post plan the school is actually required under. Now, with the budget issues, it could be like last time, Post can pull reimbursement from us. We just don't know. As it is now, nothing has changed, but we're anticipating something in the future. So the Training Administrator Course is just a, that's the person that's going to keep us in line and ensure that we are meeting the legislative requirements that are out. CIT is Crisis Intervention Training. Again, that's a legislative mandate that occurred in twenty fifteen under SB twenty nine. It's a forty hour course that covers dealing with de-escalation, dealing with people in crisis. Next one is your DRE, which is your Drug Recognition Expert Course. That's needed to legally evaluate somebody who is involved in a motor vehicle stop that may be under the influence of a substance other than alcohol or an incident in which a injury, traffic collision occurs, and we need to conduct a evaluation to ensure that the person was operating the motor vehicle safely prior to the collision. Next one is the EVOC and Driver Training Instructor. The PSP training, the Personal Skills Training that Post has mandated us is twelve hours every two years for every officer, and that covers Arrested Control, Tactical Firearms Training and Driver Instructor Training. And in the past, we funded schools to send our staff to firearms training and defensive tactics training. In turn, we developed programs with the assistance of Post where we actually conduct those trainings onsite instead of sending our personnel out to other schools, which obviously is is the way to go. It saves on, you know, your lodging, your mills, your overtime. It takes you, we've got our people here, we can train them here to meet the Post requirement. So the driver training is the other component of the PSP. We don't have an instructor. We're required to provide this training. So as it stands now, we have to shop around like every other agency in our region and find a a training course that's actually putting on that that specific course. Now, what we've run into in the past is we're one of many agencies in our region that are fighting for, you know, twenty four spots in classes. And and we're not always able to get those spots, which ends up, once we meet, once we exceed that two-year requirement, we now fall out of Post compliance for the training of our officers. So that's what we're trying to prevent. We're trying to keep everything in-house at this point. School Resource Officer, that's to bring the officer up to date on the legal and legislative requirements when dealing with juvenile offenders. A lot of that's changed. This training course will bring our School Resource Officer up to speed on that. I know I'm talking fast, so anytime you need me to slow down, I definitely will. Next one is homicide investigation course through ICI. ICI is the kind of the college that Post has. It's a certification program. I went through it many, many, many years ago when I worked homicide investigations. It it really is a valuable training tool for any officer who hasn't been exposed to deaths of a homicide nature or of a suspicious nature. Next one is child abuse. Again, that's an ICI course. Financial Crimes Course. And then Crime Scene Investigation. We only have one crime scene investigator trained internally. And moving on, dispatch and records. We've hired new dispatchers. None of them have yet gone to the required training. Post requires that we send our new personnel to that training within twenty four months upon hire. So that's we're asking for two positions for that. TrackNet. TrackNet is our computer aided dispatch system and our records management system, our report writing system. There's a mandate that's coming out from the feds, NiBRS. I don't know if that's been discussed. It's it's a new reporting requirement. It used to be called this slips my mind, it's a federal crime reporting database. Essentially, that's what it is. And that conference is going to bring our staff up to speed on how to operate our internal system to be in compliance with reporting our crimes to the federal database. Next one is the PRA for two slots. And then the Communication Training Officer. We bring personnel into the department. Obviously, we have to train them. This is the dispatch equivalent of a field training officer. And I believe that's it. No. Well, we asked for a lot, didn't we? I'm sorry. Management update training, like the police officers, law enforcement managers are required to go through what's called CPT training, which is twenty four hours every two years. So that'll meet that that requirement. And that looks like that looks like it. So everything we're asking for either triggers a legislative mandate or is needed to better prepare officers for the things that are coming, the requirements that are coming from external partners to help us be able to effectively report crimes, track data, everything that's being required of us now, so. Was that on mute?
Go ahead, Tara. So a lot of these items are crossed off. The justification that they're Post mandated trainings, which I would think means that they're mandatory. Is that not the case? We can just go a year without doing them?
We could. So everything we did with the budget, we did on what can we, how can we survive for twelve months? And and a lot of these courses, we're asking for like the basic traffic investigation collision. We have personnel in the department that's trained.
Okay.
The problem is we have new people that they show up to the call. They may not have the skill set to effectively investigate it, so we'd have to switch out and call in another officer. So part of the basic training matrix, when we hire somebody, we'd like to get them to do, you know, the interview and interrogation school, the basic traffic investigation. So some of our newer folks don't have that yet, but are I hate to call them seasoned, because everybody here is younger than me, has that experience. So we could we could juggle.
Okay. And we have enough staff to be able to juggle?
Yeah, we when we develop our patrol schedule, we look at stuff like that. You know, we don't want to have one, you know, we've got, we deploy with a sergeant, two officers. We don't want those two officers not to have a skill set that that complements each other.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions about police department training? And you probably saw on each sheet, you have the total cost, for example, on the first page in patrol, five thousand dollars, and then to the right, you have the Post incentive tra reimbursement of two thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars. So you can see on each training how much, you know, we can obtain in reimbursement for the police department. Police officer standard training. So moving on to Development Services. Mr. Rivas, would you like to walk us through the trainings that unfortunately we're recommending not funding, but at least talk about what these things are?
Yeah, certainly. We basically eliminated all the non-essential training from our department, meaning sure, we'd all like to take to continue our education and planning principles and those kinds of things. But I think we're we're happy that we've been seeing there's quite a number of webinars, pre-webinars and other opportunities that we've been trying to take advantage of to stay current with all the all the new regulation that's happening. The one thing that we did keep in there that you will see, and that's training for our code enforcement person. Since code enforcement is can be legally challenging, we want to make sure that she's up to date so that we follow the correct procedures and maintain appropriate due process. And so that's the only training that we're going to recommend that gets funded. appropriate uh, due process. And so uh, that's the only training that we're going to recommend that gets funded for next fiscal year.
Thank you, Pierre. Any questions on that? Moving on to engineering. Becca, if you could walk us through the uh, engineering division as well as the work.
Sure. Uh, so we had requested originally um, an, an attendance to the Public Works Officers Institute Expo, which is um, an annual conference that's hosted by League of California Cities and SEAC. The conference is a good opportunity to kind of get some, a, a voice at the table uh, for regarding some policy changes to programs that we currently participate with, such as like highway bridge program and SB one policy development programs and such. Um, however, uh, obviously due to just, um, you know, what's deemed essential and what's non-essential, we kind of deemed it non-essential. Um, and uh, it's, it, it still warrants uh, an attendance, but I think that I'm just gonna go and pay for it myself, just because I think that there's some value to it, but there's no reason why the, the general fund should pick up for that, um, given our current situation. The other training option was to do a citywide GIS training course. We've actually been in discussions with Esri about getting a citywide um, seat and license for uh, the GIS program. It's beneficial to uh, just about every single department. Um, I know that Officer Randall with the PD uses it for the hot team. Um, planning uses it for their land map usage, uh, engineering uses it. Um, and public works uses it for facility maps. And then there's uh, benefits related to property tax assessment, et cetera, for the uh, finance department. However, uh, the cost of the program is about 15,000. And then when all this started coming about, we said, you know, let's just pump the brakes and not make that request right now. And then had we requested that, we would have necessitated the training for it. So if we're not asking for the program until possibly later, then the need for the training is a moot point. So uh, we removed both of those items. And then for the water reclamation facility, uh, we still have uh, training for our um, confined space, our mandatory annual training for confined space, first aid. Uh, we do include uh, public staff in this training as well. They'll be included. Uh, so to kind of get a little bit more bang for our buck between the departments. Um, we did eliminate uh, attendance to the annual conference uh, for CWA, which um, was deemed non-essential, but uh, we do have a safety day and single day training uh, available that we'd like to keep in there. Um, it kind of really focuses on some of the best management practices and safety within wastewater treatment um, on several topics, chemical, uh, chemical usage, um, procedures, et cetera, and, and reporting as well. So that concludes everything for engineering.
Rebecca, if I can add quickly too, I believe on those uh, the Northern Safety Day and the single day training, some of those can count towards uh, training that our operators need to keep their operator license up. Don't they have specific requirements there?
That's correct. They do have to obtain basically credits towards uh, either the next step of uh, receiving their operator certification or maintaining their current certification. And uh, those uh, two training opportunities do allow for that. We do have several folks uh, down at the plant that are um, operator one, operator two, and op three positions. That's it.
Okay. All right. Moving on to Dave stepped away, Matt, to uh, community service and parks. Terry?
I um, I originally had um, three different um uh, trainings in here. Uh, the first one is certified playground safety inspector. Now, we haven't had one of those um, since uh, since we've been um, operating as far as I know. So this is something that I want to implement and it is a mandatory thing to uh, continue to um, be able to inspect our playgrounds properly. Uh, we have inspected playgrounds, but there is uh, there's a standard that we want to, to reach and it's an important training for our park maintenance folks. So that's the one that I had continued to keep in as mandatory. Um, the other certified pool operator license, we already have two of our three guys, and this was just to get uh, our third guy up and running on the pool operator, but um, it's um, you know, the fact that we don't have the pool operating this year, plus we already have two people, makes that a little bit redundant. And so uh, there's no, there's no penalty for a lapse in that. There's just a, it just has to be, that test needs to be retaken. And then pesticide applicator, we only use um chemicals that are i- in the um not in the hazard or in the, in the uh, danger category for these. And so that was something that was a a good thing for people to know, but it was definitely not something that we needed. So um, all in all, we're just looking to do the playground safety inspector. And I could take any questions.
Any questions on that? Thank you, Terry.
One, one more page for Terry on, right, on recreation?
Recreation.
Oh, okay. Let me jump in here. Okay. And on the recreation side, um, we, uh, we put in these, put these in um, just for uh, if there's, if there's the ability, ability, uh, both of these are non-mandatory. Uh, the first is the aquatic management school, and that's good for, for our folks to go uh, to that. We haven't had somebody trained in that since Matt took it a while back. But that was something that we were looking at uh, doing for uh, for um, our part-timer Carissa, but we pulled back on that. California Park and Rec Society Conference, that's one where travel's probably not gonna allow it to happen anyway. And so um, that's something that we can just uh, store away for a rainy day uh, in a future year when things are more normal. Uh, the other thing is um, front desk safety uh, and safety security training. We had one employee that went to a class. It was a pretty good class, but um, I think we can do better and send two folks. And I think we're talking about uh, trying to combine this with other staff that we have, so multiple people can have this training. And this is mostly uh, what to do in case of uh, emergencies, both um things that happen around the office and then also how to um, act defensively if there's a situation where staff is in danger. And so that's, that's all I have and I can take questions.
All right. Any questions for community services? Training. Okay. Thank you, Terry.
Thank you.
Let's move on to public works on page 11. Nick, if you could walk us through the water lines, sewer lines and streets training?
Sure. Uh, the first two, the first aid CPR in confined space. As Rebecca mentioned, um, those would be combined down at the water reclamation facility. Um, we're not anticipating bringing on any uh, flaggers this year. And so all of our employees right now are currently trained in um traffic flag and safety, so that wouldn't be necessary. There are some opportunities for free training that tend to pop up throughout the year and if necessary, we could, we could send to those um, if needed. The next one's continuing education for water. That, that's the one that's required by the state for us to maintain our water distribution operator certificates. Cross connection water, that, that would be eliminated. That would be an additional cross connection specialist. Um, we currently have one and we're okay with that. Uh, asbestos pipe is one that, that is required by OSHA, so that's something that would be necessary for us to, to do.
Right now.
Sewer collections, tho- those are the classes that are necessary to maintain our um, certs uh, to be in compliance with um, our um sewer, sewer management plan and also for uh, the collection system certs that, that the employees possess. Um, AWW, AWWA would, was American Water Works Association Management. Um, that would've been nice to go to, but it's not absolutely necessary. And then on um, excavation and trench safety, everybody's current on the certificates for those, so that's something that we can push out a little bit. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Nick?
I do have, I do have one. Do we actually, do we have a lot of asbestos pipes in our town?
We, we have less on a daily basis. Um, but what, what the deal with that train is, is that it's to, to make sure that the guys are knowledgeable when they do go to remove it so that they're not cutting it with like a hot saw or anything like that, that they kind of bag it and they're not getting any of the um, there, there isn't any exposure for the employees when they're doing that. And then also with, with the disposal of it. So I would say I ha- I have it all written down, the, the estimates on, on how much we still do have, but I would say that there's still a pretty good number out there. When we pull, we pull, there's, there's some bags that need to be disposed of um, currently, so.
Good. Thank you.
Yes.
There, there was a new regulation that came out uh, just recently uh, that required some additional training on that. Um, and uh, I think this is a lot of this in response to that. So just in the, within the last year or two, there was something that came on about asbestos pipe and, and the need for uh, required training on that that came out through OSHA, I believe.
Thank you, Cleve. All right. Moving on to s- elected official city council. Um, and in no way are we uh, trying to be disrespectful, but we know that you're very frugal and um, actually this year um, it's been hardly any costs at all, so um, we've assumed um, no budget for city council training. And if that's a bad assumption, please let us know. We'd be happy to incorporate whatever you feel is necessary, so. Any questions or comments on that?
He got his, he got his chairs last year for this year.
The what?
Oh, go ahead, go ahead, Patty.
I'm just assuming uh, the one thing that, you know, we usually go to is if the league is in Sacramento, they have their conference and I don't think they, if it's scheduled, I'm not sure if it's here or Long Beach this year. Um.
It's, it's Long Beach, it's Long Beach again because the uh, they're still rebuilding the
Yeah, that's right. This, um, okay.
If, if it even happens.
Uh, right.
Right. Again, if any of you feel like there are some things, some even the league division meetings or anything uh, that you'd like us to put uh, somebody in there, please let us know. We're happy to do that. Um, we, we, we don't like zeroing your accounts out completely like that, but uh, under this circumstance, we felt this was what we would recommend, but we're open to uh, putting at least somebody in there if you'd like us to, so.
Well, it seems like all the conferences, I mean, everything's pretty much closed, you know, the, the things they had scheduled, so I don't think they're gonna happen.
Yeah. Well, it may not, uh, I, I, you know, maybe next spring, maybe things start to come around again. I don't know.
That's true.
And again, that's something we could look at mid-year.
When we get the information, you know, and might be the time that you could, you know, a- as you said, you're gonna look at this again later on, so.
Right.
We'll get Nick those tools first.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Next section is administration, uh, city manager.
Um, these were just some that I had put in. Uh, usually every year I look a little bit at the city, league city manager conference. Um, uh, I, I put it in there, but it, it got taken out pretty quickly, put it that way. Um, the first one on there is just miscellaneous things that I go down to Sacramento for, my travel for that, but uh, I'm, I'm not worried about that. I just took that out. And then the front desk safety training, as was mentioned by was it Terry? I'm trying to remember. Somebody else has that in their department. And we, we wanted to uh, have a one or two of our people go to that also. I think it's just one person, so uh, probably Aaron uh, participated in that also. Not that any of them are not doing a good job with it, but a, additional training or reminders can always be good for them to, to help keep them up, so. That's it.
Thank you, Cleve. Any questions regarding administration training?
Oh, sorry. City clerk. Uh, this is uh, training that uh, Regina continues to do to, she does have her CMC, which is her certified municipal clerk, but in order to maintain that, it's required that she do uh, annual education. Um, and so these will, these will meet that. This is down quite a bit from what she's done in the past because she does, does now have her, her CMC, so.
Okay. Any questions there? Thank you. All right. Moving on to finance. Um, so under the circumstances, uh, there was some very valuable training. Uh, some of these things, like the customer service training, we, we just to keep our skills up, you know, we are the face of city hall. Um, we like to do that, but we understand that under the circumstances we're in, we just have to cut back and perhaps maybe look at some of these things um, at mid-year. But collection training, you may recall you uh, entered into a new contract uh, with the universal recovery. And so they do have some tools that we can tap into in the meantime and, and avoid having to go to training. Um, CSFMO or GFOA training, um, those are things that we would like to do eventually, but we understand, again, the circumstances we're in, we'll uh, defer that or look for other funding to cover those things, so. Not a problem. Any questions there? Okay. Um, the other handout is Green Bar and it's titled conference training and travel request summary. And what this does is takes all that information and rolls it up into one sheet. And you can see that um, the total cost before reimbursements, um, kind of in the middle there is $37,208. And you can see the split by fund. Uh, the police department estimates they'll receive about $16,000 in reimbursements if we did these post incentive trainings. So the net impact uh, is $20,833. Um, the impact to the general fund would be 24,000 less the 16. So about $8,000. We started out um, total training before we made these adjustments, it was $85,000 with $50,000 coming out of the general fund, so less than half of what we originally uh, requested. So again, because of these uh, circumstances, we're just limiting our conference training and travel requests to health and safety type training, so. Moving on to the next item, which is your general fund budget adjustments. And this is a portrait document. It's, it's got a lot of detail and I apologize, but we just wanted to be as transparent as possible to you and the public of you know, where we're looking at cutting. And I have to say that um, a lot of these things, you know, are really stopgap measures. It's not things we want to do or feel like we can continue to do over several years, but it's just under the circumstances, when you, when you're dealing with a $1.6 million deficit, um, it takes sacrifice. And, and so the department heads have done a great job and Cleve of rolling up their sleeves and figuring out how can we solve this problem, at least a good part of it. And uh, so the first page starts out again with the police department and patrol overtime. So you can see it, we're in general fund and then it goes into police department and then the division patrol, and then you can see the other divisions down there. And so Commander Rand, if you could kind of walk us through briefly uh, some of the highlights, the bigger items in these lists.
Okay, so um, when we, when we took a look at this as a leadership team last week, uh, we tried to pull up historical numbers for a lot of these items uh, using a five-year average um, and making cuts. Uh, keeping in mind that if we had, we're operating in a, in a, in a 12-month block, so if we make these cuts, we still have a lot of the equipment um serviceable or within our supply system to where uh, we can still pull from. So there, you know, cut, cutting this stuff doesn't mean we no longer have it. This means that, it means we have to reduce in, in consuming what we currently have and be mindful about what's gonna happen uh, next budget year. Uh, some of the bigger ticket items, again, the $50,000 reduction and, and overtime. Uh, that's optimistic on our part, taking a look at uh, some of our programs and the way we're deploying our personnel. Matter of fact, I had a meeting with our leadership team sergeants today and we discussed specifically overtime and expenditures. Uh, minor vehicle repairs, 16,000, you know, vehicles that we do have on hand are newer. Uh, the ones that are kind of the money pit are older vehicles. Um, they just don't build them like they used to. As you go through, you'll see other smaller uh, reductions. Uh, fuel costs, we're anticipating a reduction in fuel. Again, David mentioned earlier in the presentation that their uh, fuel cost, fuel is, is cheaper. And the vehicles that we're currently using now aren't the big Crown Victoria V8s. They are uh, newer vehicles with uh, better gas mileage, so the pro- projection was that we would see a reduction there. Um, investigations overtime, again, uh, this is just gonna be being good stewards of, of um how we deploy our people and uh, how, what they're doing with their time. Uh, equipment, office supplies. Um, when we, when we were going through this, we were actually with uh, clipboards, taking a look at what we had in our current supply chain, so uh, we're, we're confident that what we did cut, we, we could do without for uh, this time period. Um, and it's not really taken into consideration if we have any And it's not really taking into consideration if we have any major breakdowns of, or failures of current equipment. So we're just, we're keeping our fingers crossed and, and doing our part. We know everybody's taking a cut, so we wanted to make sure that we were being as efficient with what was being allotted to us as, as possible. So. Kind of glanced over it. Does anybody have any specific item questions?
I'm, I'm going to play the bad guy. It seems like every year, it's always overtime is an issue, because it adds up to an awful lot of money. And I know that we've tried to address it in the past, and I'm just wondering, how's that going?
It's, it's one of the more challenging aspects of, of really any organization. You know, for us, we can't, we can't predict when a major event is going to occur, or shortage in staffing. Some of the other stuff, we can kind of take an educated guess, you know, our, our staff as far as their vacation and how much is used per year, our projection on, on their sick leave usage. So those things, we can kind of, we can get a lot closer with the number than we could say if a major event or catastrophe was to happen. If, if that does occur, then, then all of these just go out the window and we're.
Is the biggest problem shortage of staff? I know for a while, we had several officers, well, not several, but we had injuries that caused them, you know, not to be working. And so that kind of made it the overtime issue a little bit bigger. That was just one.
Yeah, whenever you don't, whenever some, somebody can't show up for work, we have to replace that body. We're pulling, we're pulling a, a staff member from another squad on their days off to fill that patrol obligation.
Quick question. Do you have a, a sense of the percentage of this overtime that would be allocated to the events downtown?
You know, that's tracked, and it's, I don't have that in front of me. But it is tracked, and it's tracked under a, because we provide those services on a reimbursement basis. So it's really not a, we're really not pulling out of our overtime allotment. It's, we're classifying it as overtime, and then we're billing, and it's getting.
So, so historically, not all of your time has been attributed to a reimbursement or availability of being reimbursed. Some of it was done, is that still the case, that these events sometimes, for instance, a Christmas event is a city, is a city event. So that particular event, probably you don't bill? Or do you bill a different agency for that in internal billing?
No, it's a city sponsored function where the city takes the hit.
Okay.
And Dave's more clear on how that reimbursement function works as far as our, our special events. I'm only kind of giving you the periphery of it. He, he's on top of it.
No, you, you explained it correctly, Joe. And, and one thing I did want to point out is, and correct me if I'm wrong, Joe, if a police officer is called to court on their scheduled day off, that's also overtime. And we kind of don't have control over that.
Yes, there, yeah, there's, and as we tried to take a look at that being aggressive in the way we're, we're going through our budget, but it's, it's a wild card, really.
Kara, unmute.
Would hiring another patrol officer alleviate that overtime? Or does it not just, it just doesn't work that way because of how unpredictable it is?
Yes, I mean, not a lot of the overtime, so not a lot of the overtime is due to vacancy overtime. It's just due to, because of the way we're structured as an organization, we're, we operate razor thin. So when one's, when one's off, for whatever reason, we have to, we have to backfill that with an overtime position. So we're trying to.
Have a position there when, when balance it out over the long run?
It, it potentially could if we had an ability to have more staffing, then we can, we can identify what a minimum staffing schedule would look like. So if we deployed with four officers per shift and said that, no, we can actually function with two, so two can essentially take time off, and we would never hit that. We'd never need to backfill those positions, so.
And getting back to the Vice Mayor's question about special event overtime, we'll do some analysis and, and at your next budget workshop, provide that information to you, if not sooner.
Thank you.
And so, in total, now, the totals, subtotals for the police department, that's not all of their accounts. It's just a subtotal of those particular accounts where we've identified savings. So of those accounts, before adjustments was five hundred and eight thousand, five hundred and eighty-two dollars. The police department identified a hundred and thirty-eight thousand, eight hundred and eighty-two dollars, which is fantastic. And so of those accounts, it leaves three hundred and sixty-nine thousand, seven hundred, and follows that same track throughout this document. So any other questions about police department budget adjustments? If not, moving on to development services. Pierre, if you can walk us through those adjustments?
Okay, basically, you see there is other contractual service, plan check services, and building inspection services. All three of those are provided to us through contract with Inner West Services, Building Services. They are basically our building division. If you recall, some, some years ago, the city actually had a building official that was an employee. So at that time, we were in the middle of the Great Recession, and it was decided, based on our workload, we needed some flexibility, and it was a cost savings to the city, we would then fully contract with Inner West. And it's really worked out pretty well for us, because essentially, what, what happened over the last two months is for us, for us in the building, we've fallen off a cliff. We've gone from utilizing staff from Inner West full-time, Monday through Friday, where now we're down to two days a week. So we essentially have broken down the tasks that are performed by Inner West for us. Other contractual service would be, that's the time that Inner West staff would staff the front counter, answer phones, answer, it used to be that it would help customers to come to the counter, but we don't do that any longer. But that's essentially our customer service. If a contractor needs to ask questions of a contractor, then we have Inner West staff that they serve as our building official. The next one is plan check services. So we do that either in-house with our building official when he's here on Tuesdays or Thursdays, or depending upon the complexity of the building plan, it's actually shipped to their office in Roseville electronically, and then they provide the comments, and they send it back to us, and we interface with the contractor electronically that way. Building inspection services, that's done by our in-house, Inner West building official, and we conduct all the inspections then that are necessary, keep up with our workload on Tuesdays and Thursdays, just twice a week. So when you look at these costs, you're looking at, we're estimating a hundred and forty-three thousand for those, amount for that services. So that's what we, that's what we're billed for from Inner West. So we're expecting to be billed for that amount. And also, our building permit fees then are supposed to cover those costs. So we're anticipating approximately a hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars that would come in in revenue. And so we're looking at, we're looking at potentially about, you know, and it's give or take. We tried to be as accurate as we could, but we're looking at at least about fifty-two thousand dollars left over, meaning we should be able to cover the cost of Inner West services, based on our fees that we collect for the services, both building permit application fees, and then fees for plan check, and then fees for the more complex projects then, where there's a number of different inspections, we charge for those inspections. So we feel very fortunate that we didn't have to lay anybody off. We just cut back on Inner West services, and it's.
Budget.
It's fine. We're hoping, now, looking at these numbers though, with, so, we are looking at, hopefully, if things start to turn around a bit better, we were looking at plugging in for maybe three days of coverage. So that's what you're seeing here for the entire fiscal year. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Pierre, if, if you have any, if you have any pro, I'm getting a feedback. Can you hear me? Okay.
Yeah, you're good.
Now we got you.
If, if, if there's any disputes with the building inspector, I mean, some people get really angry about, and say they come back to you, then do you have to go out personally and resolve this, the problems? How do we work that? Since the, since these people are really contracted, you know, they're not, I keep getting a feedback. Are you guys getting that?
I'll try and repeat the question, Patty, to make sure I have it correct. I think what you were asking me is, if there's a issue or dispute between maybe a finding from, from our Inner West building official and the contractor, how is that, how is that dispute resolved?
Right.
So basically, if there is an issue, there's two different avenues to do that. First of all, I just want to just back up, and I, I'm hoping that we're not having as many of those kinds of issues that maybe we had in the more recent past. We've had a change in personnel with Inner West, and we've been very, very pleased with the caliber of the building official that is now serving us, both the one we recently had and the one we currently have. The one we currently have is what was a building official out in Modesto. He's had, he's had years and years of experience, has an engineering background, and he's very good with the public, and extremely knowledgeable about the building code. So back to your question then, if there's a legitimate dispute, meaning the building official is interpreting a, a, something out of the building code different than the contractor, there is the ability of that contractor then to appeal. And then we would, we would basically put together an appeals board to hear that dispute. But a lot of times, at least in the more recent past, I would sit in, in a meeting with the building official and with the contractor, and go over what the issue is. And we've been able to resolve those past issues. So that's usually the first step we do. But if there's, if it's clearly something where it's an interpretive issue, then there's always the ability of the contractor to dispute that interpretation of the code. But our building official does have some latitude in how he defines and interprets the code, as long as the, the intent is being met for the billing code, and we're not violating any health and safety issues that may result from a misinterpretation of the code.
Okay, thank you.
Mark?
Thank you. Good evening, Pierre. Thanks for the update. I have a question regarding code enforcement. Is, how, how are we doing, being able to field our code enforcement person in our efforts citywide?
I'm sorry, Mark, I didn't understand your question.
Is there any effect to our ability for our code enforcement officer?
We currently have, we're currently funded at half-time for code enforcement. If you recall, some time ago, our code enforcement person, we wanted to have her full-time. And so we teamed with the, with our police department, and we utilized the tobacco grant. So half her salary is paid by the tobacco grant. So she assists the PD with implementation of anti-tobacco smoking. She goes to the schools and, and various things, it's sort of a campaign, anti-smoking campaign. We're also looking at developing a tobacco products retail ordinance. And we're also looking at preparing a draft ordinance for actually banning smoking in, on Main Street. So those are items that we're working on, that we hope to bring to the council. So fifty percent of her time is paid for through the tobacco grant, and the other fifty percent is paid for through the general fund for code enforcement. And of course, a significant amount of my own time is spent on code enforcement.
Is, is that adequate for the number of code enforcement requests that you get?
No.
Thank you.
Hey. Any other questions for development services? Being none. So you can see the total savings there, twenty-four thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars, moving into engineering. And I, I want to preface, through this document, there are certain personnel assumptions that we may or may not be able to talk about. And so this particular department, we have one at the bottom, and I'll let Rebecca kind of talk about an anticipated retirement there.
Hi. And so we went through our budget and focused, this, this document happens to focus on fund, but we did look and see where we could find some savings related to Water Enterprises, Silver Enterprise Fund as well, just collective savings. But we were able to free up some savings under the various items you see there, contractual services, minor vehicle repairs, and memberships and publications, legal notices, computer supplies, et cetera. The other contractual services and notices, those items generally kind of get embedded as a project cost, because the legal notices are typically the notice for bidders, and those are billed as a project cost, as well as other contractual services. We've been handling those items through the CIP process. And then survey supplies and drafting supplies, we can forego those along with paints and solvents requirement, or for engineering specifically. And then vehicle parts and maintenance, equipment parts, we were able to free up those funds too. We feel we're able to cover it with other budgetary items. And then, speaking just briefly to the salaries and benefits item that's listed there, is we do have a member of the engineering staff that, given just timing of everything, that they are, they've looked at retirement. And so that right there is a portion of that salary savings, as you know, the, there's been some adjustments workload-wise for that. And I'll, that's all say on the matter.
Maybe I can, I'll, I'll chime in on this, because this affects our department also. That person is currently off due to the COVID-19 pandemic. Not that she's ill, but is, is in a category where she shouldn't be at work. And so what we've done is I have been sharing, Aaron Strong, my secretary, with the engineering department. It's worked out well. Under the circumstances, looking at each department, trying to have some savings, I looked at that carefully, at discussion with my staff and with Rebecca, and we are looking at, assuming this budget goes through, that that would become more of a, a permanent, not a permanent, but at least a, a temporary, long-term temporary solution to help with engineering, some of their clerical, some of their billing, and some of those things that they do, and still be able to fulfill what I'm doing. Right now, I believe it's working well. Aaron's been answering phones. I think she has about six or seven lines that comes into her phone now. And it, it's, we've been able to handle it. It is a little bit slower in our office at this time, in, in terms of public calls and stuff like that. So as it goes right now, we've been able to cover that. And so we'll, we'll look into that for the coming year.
Thank you. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Rebecca. Thank you, Cleve. Moving on to community services department. Terry, if you could kind of go through the, the highlights here of these.
Sure.
Probably the most out of all of us, and including the not reopening the pool, which I know the council's already approved. So.
Right. Can everybody hear me?
Yep.
Okay. So our three subcategories under our budget is the park maintenance, then we have recreation, and then we have facilities. And so under each one of those, I'll just go over the, the park maintenance first. We were able to find some cost reductions in our part-time salaries, and this goes back to the, the truck line item, where we're not bringing on the two seasonals that we would have the ability to do that. So we're handling that just with our full-time folks. So there were some cost savings there. And then the other savings in this category under park maintenance were, came from reviewing our past spending trends, and then going from that with our lowest historical spending in these categories. And so most of those cost savings that you see under parks, under the Lions, Gold Bug Rotary, et cetera, are either reducing contractual services or supplies. And the one thing to note, and that is on the next page, page three, when you jump over, you see that, you see the, let's see, the other grounds, which is kind of halfway down my column. And so we were able to still, that, that's the dollars that we had had historically for cleaning up homeless camps and through the work with the lighted candle, and also with the tribal fire department, who's done. fire department who's done some fuel reduction and clearing. That has exposed areas where there were homeless camps. We were able to still pull another $10,000 worth of savings out of that line item. So those are the highlights for the park maintenance category. On the recreation side, which starts with the gold bug park admissions, we kept our program budgets intact, anticipating that we were going to want to re-enter our public service with our rec programs and our classes. And so I wanted to hold on to those, with the exception of, of course, the pool staff and supplies, which is under the public swim portion. And then you'll see two of them under gold bug park admissions. There's actually been a historical cushion since before I got here of dollars set aside for staffing. And in reviewing the staffing that we've got, we've got good staff. Not sure why the dollars were in there historically, but we were able to pull $21,000 out of that particular part. And then the 20,000 under gold bug park admissions under contracts was a dollar amount that we had added for this year, where we anticipated having to hire a part-time marketing person in order to try to pick up some of the slack from some of that work that was done by the gold bug park development committee in the past. So other than the gold bug park admissions, you can see public swim was a big one for those dollars that came out of pool staff and supplies. Now, on the facility side, which starts with our town hall there, again, we were able to focus, any of the big reductions that come out of that category are our public swim again, and that's various supplies. And then some smaller amounts, as we went through scout hall was one that we didn't have a whole lot of historical spending on. The public safety buildings, the police department building, these are all items where the reductions should not infringe on our ability to be able to service those facilities properly. And then we had some salary and wages on part-time at the end, under our administration, that we were, that's not a savings. So a total that we were able to come up with from those three amounts was just a little over $300,000 with all the rollups. And I can answer any questions.
Eric?
Terry, with the 130,000 in salaries and benefits for public swim, are we, I mean, being closed for this year, what's that money for? Or is that for the beginning part of next year?
Yeah, it's considering because our fiscals are split on the public swim, but it's only considering this year's costs for the pool season. And Dave probably has a little more detail than that on that besides just that number.
So we're still paying, I mean, that seems like a lot of this, just like a couple of maintenance staff?
Oh, as far as the public swim?
Yeah.
Oh, the, no, that's not, that's all of our part-time lifeguard staff and things like that, so.
Okay, but we're not going to have those for, oh, okay, so this would be?
Till next year. Yeah, in the spring.
Yeah, this is July 1 of 2020 through June 30 of 2021, so.
Okay.
So that's.
So we're expecting some for the next swim season?
Well, that's holding on to some dollars for next season. This is only considering the impact for this pool season for the 2020 calendar year.
Okay.
Terry, in terms of unanticipated costs, I know, whether it's vandalism or what we've had with the homeless, is that kind of factored in anywhere? Because I mean, I know those are continuous costs and frustrations, I know for you and your staff as well. Just trying to figure out how we've been sort of planning for that or budgeting in that.
Yeah, I did add some dollars in originally when we went through our 2020 and 2021 budget. But especially with the vandalism and things like that, can you guys hear me?
Yep.
Okay. With the, there's still dollars in there, Mayor, to cover vandalism and other expenses. So I don't foresee there being a problem. Like with our, the amount under other contractual that I was talking about, where we were able to consider $10,000 reduction, we still have dollars in there that would cover things like vandalism. And then our services and supplies and contractual services, like I said, we still have costs that we're going to incur in there, but I tried to look at our lowest amount. So I think we still have some dollars in there to do things. Large costs, no. Large unexpected costs like replacement or renovation of an entire restroom facility or things from vandalism, those are things we probably don't have the dollars for, would have to shift. But it's considering what we consider our basic wear and tear, and vandalism is part of that.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, your draft budget also includes a $75,000 general contingency for unforeseen expenditures that we could also tap into for those type of costs.
Okay.
Mayor and council, I do want to mention here, I was going to wait till the end, but this is a good place to bring this up, I think. I, we would be remiss, I think, if we presented this budget and even to the level we are here, to think that it was going to be business as usual. I promise you, there are going to be some service areas where we're going to have to take a second look at this coming year and saying, we may have done this in the past, but likely we will not be able to do this this year. So we need to be prepared for that. In just in these costs that we've seen, as you know, we're going to have another discussion regarding potential personnel where there may be different savings that we need to realize. And between those two things, I do want to caution that we are going to be, there are going to be some areas where we're going to have to probably have some service reductions in order to keep this budget within line where we're proposing it.
Okay.
All right. Any additional questions for community services? Okay, moving on to public works. Nick, if you can walk us through the highlights here?
Sure. So reductions in the first one there, other contractual services, there's in the general street maintenance, other contractual services, the storm drains, and also further down in the snow and sand removal. Some of those things, I felt we could have some reductions in if we just performed a in-house. I know that the snow and sand removal, that's something in the past that there'd been funds in there for, like they'd called the sandman from Pollock Pines, or maybe had beer camp bring in the grater to do some plowing. Going back to the building electrical maintenance, hazardous tree removal, the vehicle repairs, all those are pretty standard deductions all the way down across all the accounts. A few of the things that I wasn't able to reduce were, like some of electricity services, some things that are generally just fixed costs all the way through. Things like signs, markers, cones, that there's some slight reductions there. That just means that, you know, if a street sign gets hit, we might be bending a little bit back on it and then clearing some graffiti off of it instead of just putting a brand-new one out there. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, no questions? Any questions? Okay. So that totals 77,513, and then we move into administration department.
So looking at administration, again, a couple of these I already mentioned under salaries and benefits, that's recognizing what I talked about with the secretary position being shared with the engineering department. So that's what that reflecting. Most of the rest of these are simply some areas where we feel we're going to work on to try and cut back. Dave, if you can help me out again, I'm trying to remember with the information technology, the large, the 5,000 there that we're cutting back, almost 6,000.
That was the active network software that we used to have, but now that we're online, we no longer have that maintenance agreement.
Yeah, that was actually a correction that we found to pull that funding out. The rest of these, some things like elections, other contractual services, those are fairly minor items, and those are just some areas where we think we can watch ourselves a little more careful. There may be some things we won't be able to do, but should not have a huge impact, but may have some impact on what we are doing. So any questions? I can try to answer those.
Okay. Total of 59,696. Moving into the finance department, we made our, every attempt to cut our line items by 10% in areas that we had some flexibility. We do have some accounts, for example, on our copy machines or printer maintenance, so on and so forth, those are fixed costs. But where we could, we trimmed back by 10%. You can see, for example, the financial, we have our overtime, which is obvious, other contractual services, $1,700, other $17,000 budget, memberships, publications, praying. Other than personnel, we're primarily personnel, so we cut back how we could, so 1,990. Any questions there? Seeing none, okay. Non-departmental costs, we have payments to other agencies, and these are things like our LAFCO fees and our animal services that I mentioned earlier. Thankfully, the county's estimate is $34,000 less than what they estimated for fiscal year 1920. So in an environment where that cost is continually escalated, it's nice to see some savings there, so very thankful. So total expenditures across your general fund, we've identified $677,000. And then revenues, because we're not going to open the pool this spring/summer, we have to account for those lost revenues, which is 54,000. So that's offset by the various costs that Mr. Zeller presented earlier. So the net to the general fund, $623,000, which is approximately half of that deficit. So really, again, want to thank the department heads for digging deep and making that possible. And then as you move through the document, on page six, we have our measured J fund, which really, other than personnel, there's very little. We have other supplies, which is for our canine unit. The police department identified $1,500 there, pretty self-explanatory. On page seven, we move into the water enterprise fund. And again, you know, we've tried to make cuts, and I don't know if engineering, there was a $2,000 cut in other contractual services. Rebecca, did you have any comments on that?
No, I mean, it was, again, it just kind of speaks to, some of those services, we're actually able to roll into the CIP projects themselves because they're typically speaking project-derived necessities, so that way they're easily covered through in a different funding source.
Great, thank you. Any questions there? And then moving on to public works, Nick took a similar approach in his line items in our sewer water, excuse me, our water lines and our water acquisition and delivery. And Nick, did you have any comments about the water adjustments?
I did not.
Thank you. Total savings of 15,205. Finance, similar, you know, we looked at every line item where we could trim back about 10%. We've done that. There's a total of 1,445. So savings of 18,650. Again, our water enterprise fund's in pretty good shape, but we recognize, as Mr. Morris indicated earlier, that we anticipate with this COVID thing and a down economy that our cash flow for, you know, receivables for our utility accounts are going to be more slow pays, no pays, especially we can't shut people off right now either. So not that we like to do that, but that was a tool that we could use to get our payments. So anyway, moving on to.
Dale had a question. You brought this up again. Do you have any idea what the number of our current accounts are that we have not shut off for non-payment? Is there, do you have a, we have a growing total of those?
I know that there's three troubled accounts that you probably could say that we could under normal circumstances, but I have to say that so far we've, we're lucky. It hasn't been too bad. But when the stimulus money runs out and, you know, if this reopening continues at a slow pace, I anticipate that those that are unemployed or are making, you know, they're on unemployment, we could see more. And I'd be happy to share that with the council as a percentage of total receivables, what that is in coming months. All right, so moving into our sewer enterprise fund, again, the engineering department took a similar approach. Rebecca, did you have any comments on page nine of your engineering division there? Actually, there's one big one that we can talk about. It's a personnel item, and we can talk about plans in the future there.
Yeah, so as far as the sewer enterprise fund goes, as you know, that funds primarily the wharf and staff. We do have a couple of items there related to water reclamation facility. We did have a savings in salaries. We did have a staff member that was probationally dismissed, and so we do have some savings for that salary. And moving forward with some of the other items, we also have some savings related to our chemicals and our aluminum sulfates and additional lab chemicals, et cetera, sort of some of the items that you saw actually on the check register last night. A lot of those chemical items referenced actually covered wharf chemicals. So, and we did find some savings within communication equipment repairs, and we're able to roll a fair amount of work still into some of our existing accounts, but we were able to do a savings of about 124,037 to the sewer enterprise fund. That's it.
Rebecca, you're comfortable with the level of staffing at the wharf, even with this, the person that didn't make it through probation?
We are, yeah. They actually, they've been on an alternate schedule now for six, seven weeks, and it's worked out really well. We have an A team and a B team. There is no overlap. They do their weekly staff meetings via Zoom and conference calls. And so it's worked out pretty well, actually. Hasn't been an issue. And we do have a little bit of coverage, especially during the week, there's some overlap of some positions, and so there's a little bit of coverage, but overall, everybody has managed fine, so.
Great, thank you.
Thanks, Rebecca. Any other questions there for engineering? Moving on to public works, Nick, if you wanted to talk about the adjustments there in sewer?
Sure. The major adjustment was in the other contractual services. That $50,000 that's in there normally was from services that were provided by an outside company that would help with some of the sewer main flushing and cambering. A lot of that, we've acquired equipment that we can do that in-house with our backer and some of our flushing equipment that we have right now. Happy to answer any questions.
Thanks, Nick. Any questions there? We'll move on to finance. So again, an attempt to cut about 10% out of those line items that we can, we've identified 1,445 in savings there for the finance department. So when you look at the entire sewer enterprise fund, we've identified 149,182, which is great. I'm sure the ratepayers appreciate that. And in total, all the cuts over all funds totaled 792,585, a chunk of change. All right, so with that, I'm going to try to bring up a spreadsheet that shows you our budget kind of summarized. You see that, Cleve? Hey, it worked. It'll excel. So what this document shows you is by fund, and it's very truncated our draft budget. This isn't what we're recommending, this is just where we're at right now. So looking to the left, where you see a column C, general fund, you can see that our projected revenues, and this is before adjustments, 8,501,707. uh, eight million, five hundred, one thousand, seven hundred and seven dollars. Um, expenditures before adjustments, nine million, four hundred and seventeen thousand, three hundred and ninety-six dollars. So we have a, a nine hundred and fifteen thousand dollar deficit. We have our transfers in of two hundred and ninety-one thousand, uh, from your gas tax fund. You can see that right in the next column, in and out. And then transfers out of six hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars. And, um, we talked about, you know, the, the increased transfer out to measure J to cover its deficit. A good part of that, six hundred and forty-nine thousand is that, as well as our transfer to our general, um, uh, liability fund for our property and general liability insurance, uh, premiums. I have to caution the council that, um, we made a preliminary estimate of that. We received our information from ParsAC of what that was going to be. And unfortunately, the general liability market is getting hammered. And it's not just with ParsAC, it's, it's actually with NCC and other JPAs and, and the, uh, commercial market. So, in the environment, a highly litigious mar- uh, market, um, and some, uh, in ParsAC, we had some, well, CSAC, ParsAC, um, some major claims over the last few years. So anyway, um, I just want to caution you that that transfer out's probably going to get a little bit bigger. Um, I know the ParsAC's looking at some rate stabilization funds to offset that increase, and I'm hoping that that'll, um, offset a good portion of that increase. But, uh, we won't know until the board adopts that, which Cleve's on the board, um, in the executive committee. So I know they'll be talking about that. Um, so, uh, at that point, we have a one point two million dollar deficit. And then, um, the budget adjustments we just went through, uh, to the general fund, six hundred and twenty-three thousand, uh, savings. We have the sixty-five hundred dollars in capital outlay requests. And then conference training and travel, net of post-reimbursement, seven thousand, seven hundred and eight dollars. So that's six hundred and nine thousand dollar net savings to your budget. So that one point two million dollar deficit is reduced down to six hundred and fifty-four thousand, two hundred and twenty-six dollars. So that's what we're dealing with right now, and we have, you know, we're, we're meeting with our labor groups. We're looking at, we're turning over every, huh, rock and every couch cushion we can to figure out how we're going to close that gap. So, um, anyway, uh, we're looking at everything. And so as you go across, you can see by fund, um, the budgets are, are gas tax. Um, we actually anticipate a hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollar surplus before capital projects. Uh, you may recall, you adopted a budget for your twenty-twenty-one SB one projects. Um, and, and so that's incorporated there. However, the dollar amount's slightly less. Um, so we may have to pare down that project, those projects in order to afford that. So, um, we'll provide you more information at your next workshop about that. Measure L, um, we haven't, you know, Rebecca and, and Nick and Cleve have identified some projects to utilize those funds. However, we're, we're very cautious, because we're still trying to figure out how much sales tax are we going to actually get next year. And also, this fiscal year, um, we're probably going to have to defer some projects in order to, um, balance that budget this fiscal year. So, those projects that are deferred are going to roll into most likely your twenty-twenty-one year. So, kind of playing a little shuffle here. But again, we want to defer that discussion to this fall, when we have better information about your measure H, measure L sales tax. And we will be asking your committee, your measure H, measure L sales tax committee, to make recommendations this fall on that. Um, downtown parking, uh, relatively good news. Um, you know, we anticipate approximately seventy-four thousand dollars, um, for projects. However, we are going to take a close look at all of our revenue streams, daily parking, lease, and our citations. With this slow reopening, we're doing the best we can. But, uh, we do want to adjust for anticipated revenue. We may, uh, that may, that surplus may shrink, uh, depending on what we're seeing right now and what we anticipate in the coming months. SRO, um, we're hoping that the schools open in August, and we're able to fund our SRO for that ten-month period. But again, if something happens with the schools, we may have to, if they have a late opening, uh, we may have to adjust there as well. But for right, right now, we're assuming, uh, being able to do the full year for SRO, School Resource Officer. Um, AB three two two nine, that's, uh, funding we get every year for a police officer position. A hundred and seventy thousand dollars, actually a slight surplus there of, um, ten thousand dollars. And let me see if I can adjust this over. I'm going to pull out of here. And scoot this over. It's a big, long document, so. All right, so OTS grant, you know, uh, Commander Wren spoke about the, uh, equipment that they anticipate buying. And this grant is, um, uh, again, if it's, if we achieve a grant for the equipment, we'll proceed with it. If not, we may pull it out. Uh, bulletproof vest, same thing. Um, if we're successful, we'll try to fund those, uh, vests. Otherwise, we'll have to, uh, do it all, all with the general fund. Um, state tobacco grant, um, Director Rivas spoke about, um, the grant that's partially funding his code enforcement officer for tobacco, anti-tobacco efforts. Measure J, this one's real important. Again, because of declining sales tax, um, you know, this, this fund is partially paying for the enhancements to sworn officer salaries and benefits. Um, uh, to, so the general fund's having to transfer in four hundred and ninety thousand dollars in order to balance that budget. If, if sales taxes improve, that could help the general fund. If they worsen, that could harm the general fund. Um, any personnel savings in that fund, of course, would also help, so. Uh, Orchard Hill, we talked about, um, the need of, of re-looking at our assessments, and, uh, we'll, we'll be heading towards that, um, next year. I know, uh, our vice mayor brought that up at the last meeting. We'll be working on that. Cottonwood's in pretty good shape. Um, we're hoping that someday phases four and six will be developed, and, um, uh, we're hoping maybe even in the next few years, possibly. So if that happens, it may actually shore up that budget. Um, and so, but right now, we're, we're basically balanced. It has, it shows a deficit of four hundred and eleven dollars, but we can fix that. We can, uh, reduce a, a line item there. Uh, rigid Orchard Hill, doing fine. Um, we're looking at some projects that we can fund through that, uh, slurry seals and striding, whatnot. So we're fine there. Water enterprise fund, we spoke about that. Um, right now, it's showing a hundred and seventeen thousand dollar, uh, surplus. However, uh, we did not incorporate the seven percent increase in wholesale water rates yet, so that number's going to shrink, uh, slightly. And, um, the contingency in that, I would like to ramp up just a little bit. So again, I think that'll probably be just about, um, balanced. Um, and again, uh, we may want to consider deferring the rate increase, uh, a few months, um, possibly to help our, our ratepayers a little bit. Sewer enterprise fund, looks like it has a huge surplus, but that's because measure H is being transferred in for both death service and projects. So, before projects, there's four hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars, um, there for that. And again, it assumes the sales tax levels that, um, we're seeing right now. If it's less, we're going to have to pare back. Either way, we're going to have to pa- pare back, because this fiscal year, uh, we're going to have a, a deficit, um, that we're going to have to defer some projects. So, we'll be working with, uh, Rebecca and Nick and Cleve on that. Uh, measure H, we just spoke about that. General liability fund, that's just a, basically a wash there in your reserve for economic uncertainties on the very right-hand side of eight, eight thousand, three hundred and ninety-five dollars. That's the payment coming from your parking fund to pay back for the, uh, pay stations. I'm going to pull out again, and then try to scoop this over so you can see the total.
Yeah, we can see it on our stage.
You can't see it?
The photo was there, yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It was just how it showed on your screen.
Yeah, my screen, it's not, whoops. It's because my, uh, (laugh) so there, on, on the right, my, my video was over it. So, um, you can see, total revenue, twenty-two million, three hundred and forty-four thousand, eight hundred and three dollars. Total expenditures before adjustments, twenty million, eight hundred and forty-nine thousand, seven dollars. Um, and this includes measure H, measure L, so you have a surplus of one point four million. Your transfers in, transfers out, um, equal their net. And then down below, you see a net of seven hundred and forty-nine thousand, six hundred and fifty-seven dollars savings net for twen- two point two million. Um, and again, that's primarily, um, savings in, uh, measure H, measure L for projects, as well as, uh, your enterprise funds and the, uh, parking fund, offset by the deficit in the general fund. So, again, this, these aren't recommendations. We're just kind of checking in, showing you where we're at. The next time we meet, we hope that last number will get bigger, huh, and you'll, uh, be closer to zero on your general fund in two weeks. Um, I'm hoping we'll get a good portion of that, but we'll see. It, it's going to take an effort by all of us to get there. Um, so, anyway, that's, that's everything I have. If you have any questions about the summary or anything else. Um, we did receive one question through email, and at some point, we probably should open up to the public, I guess, for, um, definitely for the public to see if they have any questions.
All of our attendees have left now.
Oh, well.
So it looks like we don't have any public left here, so.
Kathy was our last holdout. She just left, huh?
Yeah, yeah.
Well, that makes it easier.
So, council, any questions you want to bring up at this point? Um, one, one thing, as, as you know, we've discussed, and you know, we are, uh, talking with our employee unions, um, and seeing, you know, what options we have there, what we can do. That, that's going to take us a little bit of time. Uh, we do, we, we met with one group today. We have another group we're meeting with next week, a week from today. Um, and then there's a couple more that we have to, have to meet with, we hope to meet with either, either this week or next. We should be able to meet with them.
Yeah.
Um, but that just starts the process, and then we'll proceed through the next step of trying to determine what our options are in terms of, uh, personnel, uh, cost savings that we can, that we put together. Main thing I wanted to do and try to achieve tonight is give you this review. I know some of this you've kind of already seen, uh, but I wanted to see if you're, if there are other questions, comments, ideas, suggestions. Um, I know that there were some suggestions about, um, uh, looking at all of our contracts. Are there still some areas there where we might can look at? And, and yes, there are. We are still reviewing, uh, those. Uh, there's been a couple that we've, we've already addressed and, and maybe some possibilities there. But we are looking at all of those at the same time. So, with that, uh, we'll throw it back to you, council, and if you have any further questions, suggestions, ideas, et cetera, we're open.
Colleagues, any que- uh, Cara?
I wouldn't recommend deferring the, the sewer, uh, rate increase. I think, I mean, our sewer rates are really high compared to other places. But on a family basis, you know, a five percent increase might be like ten dollars or something. But citywide, we're, I'm sure it would be many, many thousands of dollars. Um, right, Dave?
Yes, um, and just so you know, getting back to your question, the water rate increase that, that is planned is five point five percent. And I will look up, I should have looked it up when I was looking earlier, the sewer increase.
Dave, does that take into effect what EID has just done, or was that a planned increase? Oh, because you said water, didn't you?
Yeah, yeah. No, that, that would be our, our increase, um, to the ratepayers. It would, it would cover that. Um, EID, the increases since we, so, since we have raised our rates, the increases passed along to EID have been less than what we anticipated. So, um, just going to look up what the, uh, so, the estimated cost to our wholesale water rates is approximately twenty, twenty-two thousand dollars. So, not a huge, and that's just for a six-month period. So it would be effective the first billing period in January. So that, the second half, we would incur in twenty-one, twenty-two.
Because I, I would agree with Cara. We need to stick with the rate, uh, increases as we have them laid out. Something that we learned when we were in this trouble years ago.
Exactly.
Past councils, and I, I just wonder whether I could be Patty to this comment, but that's where we got in trouble. Nobody wanted to raise the rates, and two percent became five percent, became twenty percent. And, um, so, I appreciate you bringing it up, but I support Cara's idea. We need to stick with what, um, we need to keep the city running effectively and do all of our, you know, programs and maintenance, et cetera.
I mean, I certainly don't want to raise the rates, but given, given the environment and the fact that, you know, we're not going to be shutting water or sewer off for anybody. If they have trouble paying, they can get on a payment plan, and I expect that we'll still work with them. But there's a reason that we need to increase the rates to begin with, and I think that we should just stick with that.
And in the past, Dave has kind of always given us an example, a kind of an average of what it would, you know, the increase would be for a household. And it, it, it really isn't very much, can, you know, considering what we would have to give up or tighten the belt on. So, um, yeah, we did it in the past, and like Mark said, we, we paid the price for it, because then we had to take a gigantic raise, and the people felt it, you know?
Yeah. And then what about the, um, fee schedule?
The fee schedule, yeah, great question. And, um, uh, so before we get into the fee schedule, I just want to make a comment about the water sewer rates. First of all, I want to thank the council for your cautiousness and, um, your concern for the future. I think that is important. And, um, the sewer rate increase, just so you know, is planned four point five percent. And it's one of the lower increases in that rates, uh, structure. Um, the other thing is, is that with these, uh, low interest rates, we have an opportunity to, once again, try to refinance our O-six bonds. And it'd be real important when we go to the bondholder, or the investors, to demonstrate that we have a structure that we're following. Um, so that'll pave dividends in the future, and, and actually help the ratepayers in the future as well.
Right, right.
So, that's another project that we plan on taking on, um, over the next six months. So, um, it's, it's a good time for that. So getting into the master fee schedule, another good question. Um, we, we actually, um, completed most of the work as far as the, um, we had to study labor. It's been about, oh, almost eleven years since we've done this. And so going back and looking at what it takes to do certain things, um, for each, um, service. And so we've done that. Um, there's, um, one department we're still waiting for information on, but other than that, we're, we're set. And then we need to update our personnel hourly rates, which won't take long, and then we can bring it to you. So, I think with, um, not much effort, we could bring it to you, uh, it would probably be August. Um, we could bring that to you for adoption. So, if you're comfortable with that, we'll plan on that.
Okay. How much, um, I mean, how much impact do you think that that will have on that remaining six hundred thousand that we need to close the gap on?
Honestly, not a lot. And the reason I say that is we're in a down economy. If we were in an up economy, I would say, you know, it could be significant. But because development isn't really, there isn't much going on, and that's where the, the meat and potatoes are in that fee structure. Um, now, we do have a few projects, you know, the hotel, or not the hotel, the apartment projects that, um, Pierre, refresh my memory when those are supposed to roll out, please.
Um, I've been working with the, um, with the developers. And so we're thinking, at least we're hoping, uh, the environmental review is underway, uh, right now, and the grants are slowly moving forward. If, if, if everything comes to fruition, uh, we're hoping to get, um, uh, building plans that we can review sometime next fiscal year with construction happening in twenty-twenty-one.
Right, so, so there may be an opportunity, if we adopt, um, you know, if they pull their permits in the spring, that we could, um, you know, leverage some of those higher fees.
Okay.
A question for Pierre. Um, is this going to include our Tim fees? Because I know those have been, um, aren't we due to have, to have those so that we're being able to justify what we're charging?
Yes.
Dave talks about master fee schedule. Does that, including that work here?
That's, that's a separate process. In fact, that may be better for Rebecca to give an update on the status of that. I know that we have been working on a TIM fee update. We were working closely with Eldorado County to complete their work so that we can piggyback on some of the opportunities we would have on the work that's been done to their TIM fee schedule. So if Rebecca's there, I'll turn it over to her to give an update on where we are on the TIM fees.
Thank you, Pierre.
So you may recall, we generally speaking, do an annual update to our TIM fee schedule based off of the engineering news and record estimated annual increase to construction costs, which is averaging right about 4.5% annually. We did an update this past year. When I first started here, we hadn't done one in a few years. And so we've been doing them pretty regularly now. As far as the TIM fee program update, as what Pierre mentioned, we are awaiting the update to the county traffic model. You know, we're surrounded, right? We're a little island. And so in order to make sure that our traffic data and the supporting nexus for the increase in those fees is accurate, we depend heavily on the county traffic model. Now, to the county's defense, they're in the process of redoing their traffic model to get them into compliance with SB 743, which changes from level of service consideration to vehicle miles traveled. And so that's where we're at right now. Once that has been updated, once the model's been updated, then the next step would be that we hire a consultant to help us with our TIM fee update. And then they prepare the report and provide the data and give us the nexus for the increase in fees. Is that answered?
Thank you.
If I can just add one additional thing, and Rebecca, feel free to pop in if I misspeak. But you have to understand as well that the TIM fee program is basically looking at charging a fee for the traffic generation from future development to pay for the infrastructure to support the traffic generated by that future development. Well, how that is done is once we have the traffic model, we know, looking at our general plan, what the, what the future development is that's going to happen, what kind of road improvements, improvements are we going to need? We have a TIM fee project list that shows all the improvements that need to be done in order to support the future growth within the city of Placerville. Those projects haven't been reviewed in quite a number of years. I think the last time they were looked at was probably in 2008, maybe even before that. That was the last TIM fee update that was done. So we probably want to revisit those projects. And this is where maybe Rebecca can better talk to, speak to that. Because some of the projects are very, I would just say pie in the sky. There are probably some improvements the city will never do. And so once we refresh that list of projects, then we go through the task of generating a estimate of the cost of doing and building and constructing all those improvements to support the traffic. That is then attributed to both commercial and residential projects. And that's how you develop your TIM fee in a nutshell.
So you may recall, as part of the CIP budget adoption process from 2017, 2018 fiscal year, the city did create a TIM fee update project. And, you know, even though we haven't been able to update the model and go through that route to implement SB 743, that doesn't mean we haven't worked on the program itself and done what we could do to get ready for that moment. And one of the things that we have done internally is we absolutely have reviewed the project list. And Pierre is correct, there are some pie in the sky projects that were on that previous list that we've since, so as we go through the, we have an internal draft list that we would be considering as part of the TIM fee update already. And we took out some projects that we didn't feel necessarily would serve the community best. And we added in some projects that look to be a lot more feasible and would improve the overall traffic flow through town, so.
Rebecca, do you see, as we move to VMT, would that have a significant, I mean, a negative or positive impact on TIM in terms of what those rates would be, look like?
It's kind of a mixed bag. Because, you know, you have folks, for example, you know, I travel into town. And so, you know, I have more vehicle miles traveled than, say, Cleve, you know? And so it's kind of, it's kind of a mixed bag and depends upon the use. If you, if you're able to get more multi-use projects out, then yeah, the VMT drops in theory. Because if you have, you know, like your soft story is, you know, commercial, and then you have residential above, you know, you could potentially have a work-live scenario. And so that would reduce it. But overall, you know, it, it, yeah, I mean, it can kind of go both ways, kind of depending upon the project.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, counsel, full disclosure, we actually, you approved an agreement with Bartle Wells to refresh your water sewer connection fees. And that's something that we're also, actually your capital improvement charge fees, your impact fees. So that's something that we'll be working on as well. I would like to do that after we try to get our refinancing done. Because that's, I think, there's more money at stake. But that is something else that we could do to raise revenues.
Another question regarding the master fee schedule reworking. Will it include the park master fee?
That's a separate project, and Terry could probably address that better than I can. But that would be more like a TIM fee study, or I know it's a different animal. But much more involved. But that's something that, Terry, did you want to comment on that?
On the parks' master fee schedule? Is that what we're talking about?
Yeah, I know Steve Yule was working on it just before he retired. And I want to say we were close. And again, it's, correct me if I'm wrong, but it's our justification for what we charge people to use the parks.
Yeah, and I haven't dug into that too much. I might be able to give you some more information in a future budget meeting on that. But I'll research that.
Thank you.
Yeah, if you remember right, Councilmember Kuna, we did, we completed the master plan. We got a draft fee schedule that came back with that.
That's my thought.
It was huge.
Yeah, well, I, yes, I
It was a very large number. And I think we were tasked with going back and reviewing, seeing what we could do to make that, I call it a little bit more realistic. And between staff changes, et cetera, that's been put on the, I'll say, the back burner. And we haven't gone back to it, but we should take another look at that.
Just so at budget time, it's always kind of, we need to remember that we, as a city, have the obligation to establish the nexus for any of these fee programs that we've just been talking about. And the county has had a lot of history having problems. We don't want to go there. And if one of these big projects comes up and our, like our TIM fees, if they're out of lap, it'd be very difficult to justify what we charged if it was challenged. So it's, they're not fun. And unfortunately, they always seem to need a consultant to help because they're so involved in all the requirements of the regulations. And then to submit all that information so that it becomes law, basically. It's understandable, but a lot of, a lot of expense to keep it all up to date. I thank, I thank all the staff, the department heads for that update on the various, on my various questions.
Mark, is that what, the, when we had, we hired an outside firm or else? And I, I don't know if it was through the university that we had the team that came up and did all the inspections and then gave us, advised us on the park situation? Is that what you're talking about?
Mm-hmm, yeah, that was probably five years ago now.
It's been a long time ago.
That's the one, Patty.
Okay, I remember now.
Yeah, I've got some experience with park impact fees in the past. And so I imagine when you look at the actual costs for what it would actually cost to generate an impact fee, I'm sure it was probably a little bit shocking because it usually is when you look at real costs, so.
They had some great ideas that they presented. And I, you know, I'd like to see some of them fall through, but it was just too costly.
Patty, and for the benefit of the other council, that was where we got our current number of the number of acres that we're required to have with the cities with our population.
Right.
That was one of the, one of the outcomes of that group's work.
Right.
So, yeah, thank you.
Okay. Do we have any attendees or any?
Nope, it looks like all of our attendees have left. So I think we're done, Dave.
You want me to read this question real quick?
Oh, yeah, Dave has one question that was emailed in to us. So I'll let you read that right now.
So Dennis, excuse me, Steve New, no, asked a question. Has the governor offered a zero-interest loan to cities that are in the same position we are in? And the answer is, to my knowledge, no. I know the fourth stimulus package, there was talk of loans potentially being in that for local governments, states and local governments. But that has not been approved. And I don't, I don't know if it'll ever be approved, but anyway. And if there is any stimulus money of any type, whether it's a loan or cash or grants, we'll be sure to share that with you in the future.
Yeah, I would be, I'd be very skeptical of another form of, another bill passing. I just don't, at this point, I'm not seeing it.
That's all we have, Mayor. If you want to take it back for any questions or we're
Yep. Colleagues, any other questions or comments?
No.
Okay, I think we're good for this evening. And we'll look forward to the next meeting. And thank you, Cleve, and to all the department directors for all the work here. I know it was not easy to come up with this, this initial $600,000. So I appreciate those efforts.
Dave, just a reminder quickly, what is, what is the date of our next?
Two weeks from today.
Two, two weeks from today, so the 27th, I believe.
Same, same time, 5 o'clock.
5 o'clock.
That's what we're planning, yes.
Same station.
And Dave reminded me that normally these, for these, I buy pizza for you. But due to budget cuts and the fact that I, we weren't all together, I didn't do pizza. So, all right.
Cleve, I want you to buy pizza for Joe and Nick. Both look
I'm going to
Been long days.
Can I say something?
Yep.
I was reading in the paper, and I think it's, I just want to throw this out there, that Friday night, John Sanders and a couple of the other restaurants downtown are having a fundraiser. It's for the, the high school for their music and drama department. And it sounds like a pretty tasty dish that they're offering for $30. And, you know, going to a really worthwhile cause. And I just throwing that out there. I think at the hour, I think it's from 4:30 to 6:30. It's in the Mountain Democrat today. But I just thought it was really, it sounds like, you know, a nice fare that they're offering, so.
Yeah, that's, that's something that they, that's what used to be, what they used to call a taste of Main Street.
Their taste of Maine, and they're doing it in place of that, yeah.
And they're doing it in place of, I do, I know you do have to order ahead of time if anyone
Yeah.
Go ahead, Patty, order dinner for us.
I'm going to order one for me, that's for sure.
You're an alumni, you need to buy for all the department heads.
Cleve, a quick question. What's the possibility of us having our meeting at Town Hall next time?
Oh, good question, Mr. New.
Thank you.
We will, we will definitely take a look at that. Again, we do need to be aware of the six-foot distancing. And on top of that, we need to make it available for the public to view. So there are a couple of issues, same issues we were looking at in terms of our cannabis hearing. So, but we, we will review that and see what opportunities might be available to do that. I would like to do it. I would love to buy pizza for you and do that, so. But we, we do need to be aware of, you know, how do we, how do we invite the public into that? And how do we make that work? As you know, we tried to do a possible combination Zoom live meeting at one time. That didn't really work as well as what we would have liked it to do. And so we will look at that. I've been working with Jason Tanger, our IT guy, on potential options for that and how we might can make that work. So we will review that and see if there's a way to do it. Kara?
Kara, you had a
Yeah, just a thought, I mean, you and Dave are in the same room right now, but we're still Zooming with online attendees. So could we essentially do the same thing in city at Town Hall?
It's, it's possible. Dave and I are each using our own laptops, our individual cameras. So we logged on individually, but then we didn't use the sound option. We're using our conference phone for the, for the audio. That's how we did that. There are ways to do it, really to do it right, though, we should have a, I'll call it a Zoom camera that would fit, work in our, in our council chambers, which is something we don't have. But there may be some options. We're, we're working on that. I'll throw this out. I actually looked at the potential, could we actually, and I was looking at this more for the cannabis hearing, but could we actually look at maybe going to the county EOC? They have a wonderful setup there. Large room would easily accommodate and allow us to have our distancing and et cetera.
And have the cameras.
The only problem with this, I'm looking at, see if there's any variance to this. We're not actually allowed to hold a, 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 a city meeting, a council meeting, a scheduled meeting like this outside of our city limits, outside of our jurisdiction. And unfortunately, the county sheriff's department, EOC, is outside of our jurisdiction. So I'm looking to see if there's any other options to that. But right now, that, that presents a problem for
Cleve, it kind of makes me wonder, is the county board supervisors considering going back into their chambers? And if, if not, could we use their chambers?
We possibly could, but I don't know that they have the Zoom technology available in their chambers.
Okay. I know the, I've been watching the Placerville County Board of Supervisors. They're back in their chambers without the public, just with key staff. And it's on YouTube and Zoom. And they allow public comment by calling in, so.
Yeah, and we, we could go, we could go to that level. And maybe for this meeting, that would work okay. As you recall, doing the call-ins for public comment at our regular meetings was not ideal because of the waiting time for the delay and et cetera that happens with that. So, but yeah, give us, give us a few days here. Let us see if we can come up with a reasonable solution that might can work to do that, so.
Has there been any thought as to when the cannabis hearings will take place?
Uh, no, John and I have not had a chance to talk about that yet. But we do know that we have to give, I believe it's 30 days notice, we have to give the applicants when we do that. So we need to, we need to work on that. And it's my understanding that we'll bring that back to you at your next meeting to set that date, so.
Maybe our next council meeting would be a good trial to try it in chambers, practicing for what, to work out the technical glitches before we get to the cannabis appeal.
Sure, yep.
Thank you.
I suggested to Cleve that maybe, and I, and I talked to Mark about it, maybe we could put the plexiglass partitions next, you know, so, I mean, because we're in pretty close proximity, but just to, you know, get by with doing the right thing by maybe having some of those plexiglass shields put on either side of us that might, you know, satisfy. And Mark said we could use shower curtains.
Shower curtains.
I've seen that.
Yeah, I saw restaurants doing that.
Yeah.
How rumors start.
Yeah. Oh, Dave Warren said he was already going to buy one for the front counter. So I thought, well, just add on to that order.
We, we have actually looked at being able to, if we did it in the council chambers, we would actually probably look at putting you, rather than up on the dais, we'd put you down below without any public in the room. So then you can have a bigger table that you can be able to sit around. Now, how we work all staff, all the staff into that is another issue we need to work on. But we will do some good work on that this week, so. Hopefully, we don't have to bring in shower curtains, but that's maybe. Bring it, bring your own, bring your own shower curtain.
There you go. Okay, I guess
All right.
Mayor, back to you.
Okay, any other questions, comments? All right, seeing none, then we will adjourn this evening's meeting. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, everyone.
Good night. Good night.
Good night.